Good morning, members. Members in the chamber, members online. And good morning to all the members of that, of staff in the chamber and online as well. The media, there's apologies from councillor Tom McSharry. And we have a number of councillors attending virtually as well. And I'd like to start just with the Covid. Just in light of the recent increase in numbers, I would like to draw your attention to a number of important points. The council chamber and adjacent meeting rooms have been prepared in accordance with health and safety requirements. Each person attending this meeting in person should have completed a Covid declaration form before entering this room. These forms will also serve as a record of attendance for contact tracing purposes if required. We are requesting members and staff to wear face coverings when entering and leaving the room. A response plan is in place in the event that an attendee at the meeting feels unwell or displays possible Covid-19 symptoms. And we'll adhere to the public health advice throughout the meeting. With your cooperation, it was proposed to conduct our business in a timely manner. And we'll move with that in mind. We'll move straight on with the clause. Item one, to note the minutes of the Ballymore Tubcarry Municipal District Meeting held on the 20th September 2021. Councillor Mulvey, councillor Queenan. Two, to note. Noted. Three, to note the minutes of the Ballymore Tubcarry Municipal District Meeting, Budget Meeting held on the 1st November 2021. Councillor Clark, councillor Mulvey. To confirm the minutes of the ordinary meeting of Sligo County Council held on the 1st of November. Councillor Gilroy. Noted. Seconded, councillor Watts, sorry. And now I got you mixed up. Five, to confirm the minutes of the statutory budget meeting of Sligo County Council held on the 22nd November 2021. Councillor Queenan. Councillor Clark. Six, to approve pursuant to section 183 of the Local Government Act 2001, the disposal of property at 16 Kushner Howe and Gerching, County Sligo, to Mrs Laura Mahedi. I'll propose that. Seconded councillor Mulvey. Seven, to approve pursuant to section 183 of the Local Government Act 2001, the disposal of property at Ballin Temple, Ballin Full, County Sligo, to Mr Ray O'Connor. Seconded, okay. You look for it there, Kevin. Eight, that Sligo County Council commenced the process of taking chair development known as Earl's Court, Ballymore, County Sligo, by instigating the necessary procedures under section 11 of the Roads Act 1993 to declare public the roads serving the development. Proposed councillor Mulvey. Seconded, I seconded. Nine, noted. Ten, to approve pursuant to section 183 of the Local Government Act 2001, disposal of property at 41 Parklands, Tubcarry, County Sligo, to Miss Linda Kelly. I'll propose. Councillor Mulvey, second. Eleven, to approve pursuant to section 183 of the Local Government Act 2001, disposal of property at 41 Parklands, Tubcarry, County Sligo, to Miss Linda Kelly. I'll propose. Councillor Mulvey, second. Eleven, to approve pursuant to section 183 of the Local Government Act 2001, the disposal of Sligo County Council lands at Matheraboy, Sligo, County Sligo, to Kingsbridge Healthcare Group.
Caherla, can I say that the report before us seeks approval to sell 0.387 acres of land in the ownership of the council to Kingsbridge Private Hospital for the sum of 27,500 euro? This is 25,000 euro for the land with an additional 2,500 euro to cover the legal costs and administration and mapping. Now, I understand that the sale of the council land to the Kingsbridge Private Hospital Group will allow the company to proceed to construct a multimillion euro development. And I'm certainly not opposed to the sale of the land. In fact, Caherla, I agree in principle with the sale. However, I'm of the opinion that the asking price is too low. I believe we should increase the price of the land from 25,000 euro to at least 55,000 euro, plus the 2,500 to cover legal costs, et cetera. So I'm proposing that we proceed with the disposal of the said lands for a consideration of 57,500 euro and that the additional 30,000 euro income from the sale be allocated to the Parks Department for the improvement of our public parks. And I formally propose that and councillor O'Bye, second.
Councillor O'Grady, do you want to?
Just a point of information. We have had motions down here in the past about the issue of the entrance and exit at Matheraboy Post Office. And it has been on the table for many years at Borough Council and here as well, that maybe in the long run, it would be envisaged that a road from Matheraboy would come out and would leave the Matheraboy area over by Rose Hill at the back of Nazareth House and out near Kingsbridge. And I'm just wondering, would the selling of that road have any effect on that query proposed ongoing development?
Yeah, I suppose.
You can just answer that, please, first.
Yeah, thank you, Caherla. I suppose I'll take the second point first. That's okay. It shouldn't have any impact on any proposals for a new road. I think we can't use this road because it would be coming through, it's essentially private property and through a hospital complex. It wouldn't be ideal as an alternative route for traffic. So I don't think it'll have any impact on any future proposals for a road linking across Matheraboy to the N4. With regard to councillor Bree's comments, I suppose, look, we'd looked at this initially and it's essentially an access road for the hospital that is in on their property. An internal valuation had valued it at around between 20 and 30,000. And that was our estimate, an internal estimate on that. The Kingsbridge come back with an offer of 25,000. We felt that was an acceptable given that it was tidying up the landholding in the area, not only for the Kingsbridge but also for ourselves in that we would then have it if it wasn't sold. And again, as councillor Bree has said, like, there's no opposition to the sale in principle. It is required for the tidying up of the landholdings there, both for Sligo County Council's point of view and for the Kingsbridge. With regard to 50,000, I'm not sure we get it if we went out. Like, our own valuation, it's, our own evaluation was in that 20 to 30 mark. But again, we'd be led by the councillors on that as well. We were happy enough with the valuation of 25,000 at the time.
Caherla, I'd like to thank the director for his response. And as I said at the outset, I'm agreeing, I agree in principle that it would be useful to sell that property. But given the fact that what we're talking about, what Kingsbridge is talking about is a multimillion euro development, in the scheme of things, an extra 30,000 euro for this portion of property is a pittance in terms of their budget and it would be of significance in terms of the parks budget. It's very difficult, I know, for valuers to value property like that. I've come across cases like this in the past where property may not be of significant value to the owner, but it can be of huge value to those who wish to purchase it. And the reality is, Caherla, that if this property isn't sold by us to Kingsbridge, their proposed development cannot proceed as planned. So if I was the general director of Kingsbridge or one of their shareholders, I certainly would be very favorably disposed towards paying the 55,000 plus the 2,500 for the legal fees. I think that's a reasonable amount of money because we don't want to blackmail people either. We're not in that business. One could come in and suggest 50,000 or 200,000. That would be unfair and unjust. But I really believe 55,000, it's an extra 30,000 euro. 30,000 euro in terms of a multimillion euro budget is a pittance.
Councillor Healy, I'm going to let you in. I think I did the motion in front of me then.
Thank you. Just a quick one. Had the council this property up for sale when Kingsbridge came looking for it or not? So, I mean, we, as councillor Bree rightly says, that we're in a position where we can be asking what we want for it. That's what I think we should be doing.
See, do you want to come in before?
As I said, we did, as Jim said there, we did our own valuation. I don't think we're in the business of asking for what we want in relation to it because we're about attracting inward investment to the county. And I don't think that can be lost when we're looking at doing or moving forward on such sales and disposals of land. We have no issue of going back to the group if need be. But as I said just previously, a moment ago, I think we do need to be cognizant that we're looking to attract inward investment. And when we do go back, it will be in and around the figure that we thought it was previously and looking for them then to see if they will increase it as if that is the wish of the councillors. But that is your call.
Well, I think the man has made a very valid point, Chair, about the creation of jobs and inward investment. And I suppose we always have to keep that in mind. It'll be good for the area. Councillor Bree has made a very valid point about price, but also we have to look at the amount of jobs that will be there, the facilities that will be there for both public and private people attending. So I think to weigh up the two options, I think what we have to look at is to encourage that kind of development and investment. So I think it's worthwhile going forward with what we have on the table here.
If we pass councillor Bree's motion, 55,000, in the process that we have go back again to two of our evaluators and their evaluators meet again, is that what happens here? So, there's not necessarily to say that we get 55,000. You're looking for, councillor Bree, you're looking for, you think it's too low at the moment?
It's not a matter for valuers. There's 18 of us. We represent the people of this community and it belongs to the community this land.
Councillor O'Bye wants to?
There are situations like this before where public authorities were prepared to sell off their property for a pittance. And when push came to shove, I won't mention cases now in public, but we certainly increased the income to the authority at the time. So I just believe we're asking for 30,000 extra from a huge, one of the biggest private health organisations or companies in the country. And I seriously believe that they're not going to get too excited about that.
Councillor O'Bye?
Thank you, Chair, obviously in support of councillor Bree's motion. I don't think we should be selling ourselves short. I understand you're on about investment coming in, but that doesn't mean we give everything away and get little in return. So I think we should be asking for the 30,000. Thank you.
Councillor Watts?
Thanks, Caherla. Can we just clarify, maybe from the CE, how long would this delay the project or what timeline would the project back by?
Yes, I suppose at best it would delay to the next council meeting. And that would be the best situation.
Jim, did you say as well, to hear you saying, well, that it would, does it tidy up an asset for Sligo County Council? Or is some of it Sligo County Council owned and some?
Well, land is Sligo County Council land at the minute.
It's all Sligo County Council land. It's now owned, okay. Okay, just to clarify.
But again, like, if we were to go back to Kingsbridge with a proposal of 50,000 plus costs, well, then it would be waiting on them to come back. But the earliest they could, that it would come back before council would be the next, the January meeting.
Okay, the motion I have in front of me, just to, I read it for everyone to be sure what it is, that we proceed with the disposal of the lands referred to in section 183 notice to Kingsbridge Private Hospital for a consideration of 57,500 and the additional 30,000 income from the sale be allocated to the Parks Department for the improvement of our public parks. And that's proposed by councillor Bree and seconded by councillor O'Bye. So is that agreed? The motion, yes, this is proposed by councillor Bree and seconded by councillor O'Bye, that we proceed with the disposal of the lands referred to. Now, if you're, if you're going to talk again, that we proceed with the disposal of the lands referred to in section 183 notice to Kingsbridge Private Hospital for a consideration of 57,500 and that the additional 30,000 income from the sale be allocated to the Parks Department for the improvement of our public parks. I presume that's all over the county. Councillor Queenan. So is that motion agreed? 12, to confirm the nomination of Mr PJ Cleary, Disability Federation of Ireland, to the Disability Consultative Committee as endorsed by the Housing and Corporate SPC meeting on the 28th September 2021? Okay, proposed councillor Gibbons, seconded councillor Boyle, was it? Councillor Bree. 13, to approve the recommendation of the Arts Assessment Committee to the reallocation of funds under the contribution of the Arts Scheme 2021?
Yeah, just. The initial document that was circulated with the agenda was incorrect. The recommendation that was sent out was incorrect. And I'm just wondering, has, what, what, what are we, what are we accepting now?
Okay. Donald, do you want to come in? Or Thomas, sorry, I'll let you. Donald, do you want to come in on that?
Caherla, yeah, Caherla, can you hear me?
I can, yeah.
Sorry, Caherla, yeah, the initial report sent out was actually last year, so it was a misposting of it. But I can read out the contribution to the Arts 2021. Due to the exceptional circumstances created by the Covid-19 pandemic in delivering arts events, as of the 18th of November 2021, 38,000 remains in the contribution to the arts budget due to unclaimed grants and cancelled events. This surplus must be used in 2021 and cannot be accrued as per Head of Finance guidelines. The Arts Assessment Committee met on the 19th of November 2021 and having reviewed the report, the Arts Department agreed to recommend to the elected members of Sligo County Council the following. The Arts Assessment Committee recommends approval of redistribution of 38,000 euro surplus from the 2021 contribution to the arts budget to venues and organisations as follows. The Model 9000, the Blue Raincoat 8000, the Hawkesbury Theatre 9000, the Coleman Centre 6000, Primary Colours and Sligo Artists Network 6000, total 38,000 euro. In the event of additional monies becoming available in the contribution to the Arts Fund, these will be allocated on a pro rata basis. Is it, Caherla?
I heard that that's the correct recommendation. That's been read out. And the other one that was circulated was incorrect. So I'm proposing the adoption of the recommendation as read out by?
And the seconded, councillor Bree?
I'm seconding that.
Okay, all right, we can move on. Thomas, you okay? Okay. 14, to approve pursuant to section 183 of the Local Government Act 2001, the disposal of property at number one Charles Street, Sligo, to Mr Mark Baron and Mr Keith Wilson. Can I have a poser and seconder? Thank you, councillor Gibbons. And councillor O'Bye, seconded, great. 15, to consider the chief executive's report and recommendation to proceed with the proposed social housing development at Roberts Lane, Matheraboy, Sligo, pursuant to section 179, part three and 179, part four of part 11 of the Planning and Development Act 2000 as amends, report attached. Can I have a poser and seconder? Is that what I'm on for? Agreed? 16.
Can I propose that, Chair?
You can. Okay, 17, to approve in accordance with section six of the Housing Act 1992 and regulations thereunder, provision of assistance to respond in the form of capital assistance scheme in the value of 199,787 for dwelling at Kilmorgan Castle, Ballin, County Sligo. Can I have a poser and seconder? Proposed councillor Mulvey, seconded councillor Watts. 18, to approve in accordance with section six of the Housing Act 1992 and regulations thereunder, provision of assistance to banner to the Strand Housing Association Company Limited by guarantee in the form of capital assistance scheme in the value of 35,340 for dwelling at Tullastran, County Sligo. I'll propose. 19, to approve in accordance with section six of the Housing Act 1992 and regulations thereunder, provision of assistance to New Grove Housing Association in the form of capital assistance scheme in the value of 655,285 for dwelling at La Rasa Strand Hills Road, Sligo.
Caherla, could I just ask exactly where is La Rasa? There's a few La Rases on the Strand Hills Road. Maybe Sean Martin might be.
It's probably difficult for you to know the answer to that, Jim, right now.
Yeah, that's okay. But there is a few La Rases and I'm just, somebody has asked me to see clarity on which La Rasa house that was.
Well, if?
Move on, we can move on.
Joe, we can move on and come back to it if that's agreed by?
Yeah, agreed.
Jim, will you look into that first? Okay, so we're coming back to that. We'll come back to it then. Yeah. 20, to note, to note the report and presentation to update the members on the progress.
Noted.
Noted. To set a date for the January 22 monthly meeting and there is a proposed date of the 17th of January?
I propose.
I'll leave to the end, Jim. Okay. 22, to note the monthly management report for October 2021?
Noted.
And we move on to deferred motions. 23, councillor Queenan and councillor Clark, deferred. 24, councillor Maguire?
Thank you, Caherla.
Have we a seconder? Councillor Boyle?
The last matter that was discussed the day of January, I'm unavailable on the 17th. I wonder is there another date available? And if not, I'll give my apologies.
Can, is? Yeah, I think it was, it was just felt that the 7th was, or the 10th was too tight and too early. And that was the reason that it was pushed out to the 17th. Do we look to push out to 24th or is that too long? Okay, back in the following.
It's customary practice that we always go for the second Monday, isn't it, Joe?
The second Monday would be the 10th.
Right.
Well, the first comes. I think we've established, look, I think we've established that the 10th is too tight.
That's very good. Pass on my apologies then.
All right, okay, okay.
Thank you for allowing this motion to fit in the agenda. It's asking that the council engage with Sligo leader to look at doing a feasibility study to ascertain the options for establishing a 50 metre pool in Sligo. It comes on the battle of the enormous success of Mona McSharry in the Olympics this summer. And Mona obviously had to travel to get her additional training in the 50 metre pool. And we are in fact the only province in the country that doesn't have a 50 metre pool. I know that the report outlines Limerick, but in fact we're the only province in the country that doesn't have a 50 metre pool. And as such, I think we're a bit of a poor relation. And from a sports infrastructure perspective, I think it would be a huge advancement to the province, but most importantly to Sligo. I think it's something that will happen somewhere. I note in the report that scoping exercise was done in Care Morrison, that was pretty successful, but it is inevitable. We would get a 50 metre pool at some point in the province. And I was hoping that we could lead the way on it. There are numerous clubs who would have an interest in this area, not only the swimming club, triathlon, surf life saving, schools, the kayak club and water safety. And as we're now moving into the status of a university town and city, I think it would fit very well that we would have similar infrastructure. And I would just like to demonstrate with Athlone. They developed the indoor arena at Athlone at the time, which was thought to be a big ask and possibly a little out of the way. But it has been a phenomenal success, drawn huge numbers of people from all over the country to that facility. And I would love us to have a similar, a similar type of infrastructure here in Sligo. I note that the report says that Councillor Argo T. is with leader and I'm grateful for that, I think it's positive first step. If it was possible to collaborate with the stakeholders, swimming, triathlon, surf life saving club, the schools, the kayak club and water safety, I think it would be really interesting to find out what sort of support there is locally on this initiative.
Okay, thanks councillor Maguire. Councillor Gilroy?
Yes, sir. Well done in putting forward this motion. It's absolutely something that I think we should be considering. I think we got a previous response from Mr Killefether, basically saying that it shouldn't be doing anything to undermine the regional sports centre. And I don't think that's what you or anyone else would be looking to do. It's absolutely to work in conjunction with that. But I think the timing is actually very good, that as the new Sligo becomes a university town with the technological university, I think really they should be the partners. But that's, that's just my opinion. And I think a feasibility study might be the way to look at it. Because at the end of the day, if it's not feasible, it's not feasible. And I know very well the journeys that Mona and her brother and others have had to take from Maryland's and Billy Shannon to Belfast and all that for training. It is, and there is going to be one needed somewhere in our region. And we should be looking for positive discrimination all the time for the northern and western regional area. Thank you.
Thanks councillor O'Grady.
Yeah, I'd just like to support the motion. I think it's timely, seeing the advancement of our ITs to a technological university and all the other, the Mona McSharies and all the success that we have had. So I certainly would support it. When I mention swimming pools here, I can't but think those of us that remember the voluntary group who set up the funding for Sligo Regional Sports Centre Pool, a group of housewives gathered, I remember at the time a hundred pound per house, anybody who was in a position to give it for the development of a swimming pool. So I think we can have always to be mindful of what has been done and what is able to be achieved if people set their minds on it. So I certainly support the motion. But I would be always concerned that the Regional Sports Centre Pool wouldn't be left behind in the ongoing development. Thank you.
Councillor Bree?
Caherla, I would also be supportive of the motion. There are only three 50 metre swimming pools in the entire country. There's one in UCD, one in the University of Limerick and one in the National Aquatic Centre. So certainly there's no pool on this side of the Shannon, so to speak. I do know that Galway in the past was seeking such a swimming pool and such a facility. And we know from the report from Dorothy Clark that Mayo County Council considered it. Clearly there are significant financial implications. But having said that, the fact that we are now developing and will from, I think, the 1st of April have a university campus in Sligo, I think it's the appropriate time to investigate the feasibility of it. Thank you.
Councillor Catherley?
Yeah, I'd just like to support the motion as well. We're perfectly placed here in the North West for 50 metre pools. So, as was outlined before, for all the different facilities that we have, I think it would just add to the offering that we have in Sligo in the North West. So I'd like to wholly support the motion. Thank you.
Could I, if nobody else wants to come in, could I add my support to the motion as well? I think it's a timely motion as well. And I certainly think it would be support of our present Olympic athletes and certainly future stars as well.
Thank you, Caherla. If I could just come in and thank all of my colleagues for their support. And just to confirm that there's no suggestion that it would be usurping in any way the regional sports centre, which is a fabulous facility. I didn't know the history of it, councillor Grady. It's wonderful to know that there's so many, I suppose mums in particular out there who were prepared to go out and knock on doors and raise the funds for that. were prepared to go out and knock on doors and raise the funds for that facility, which is brilliant and is used constantly. I suppose my idea would be that it would enhance that facility. That would be in my thoughts and I thank you all for your support.
Perfect, so that's agreed. We move on to twenty-five, councillor Walsh.
Yeah, I'd take this, it's been on for the third month in a row, so I'd be brief. I understand there has been some progress made relative to recruitment of staff, so maybe we could get an update on that. And can we just get clarity on, is there another round, round two of the active travel programme to be expected this year? And has there been a submission made from this county relative to projects for round two? And maybe the members could get a copy of the submission for round two of the five-year active travel programme, which government has committed to one million euro per day for every day of the year. Thank you.
Could I get a secondary? Tom, are you there?
Yeah.
Do you want to take that?
Yeah, thank you, Cahill. Yeah, we've sanctioned now for a team for active travel. Offers are currently in the process for staff for that team. As I outlined at the budget meeting, we've already commenced work in terms of our initial funding allocation of two point six million euro. There are significant works underway at a number of locations or indeed have been completed across the county and in the Sligo urban area. That will continue in twenty twenty-two. My understanding is that our allocation for, for the current year will be repeated again in twenty twenty-two. We don't have any agreed programme, it'll be an evolving programme. We've outlined to the department that one of the key elements to an active travel programme is the completion of a local transport plan for Sligo urban and environs area for twenty twenty-two. And that will be for the newly established team, that's going to be their key objective in the first half of twenty twenty-two, because that will outline the proposed works and the proposed programme for the remainder of the five-year commitment that we have from government in terms of active travel. And again, as I said at the budget meeting, over the last couple of months, Transport Infrastructure Ireland are now being given a role in terms of active travel. And we have in line with that, we're currently preparing documents for the appointment of consultants for two major active travel schemes on the national road network. They're both in conjunction with the works recently completed on the Calouni Castle Baldwin scheme. So we're looking at an active travel scheme from that that has been delivered as part of the new road out as far as Castle Baldwin Village and then from the Tubber Bride roundabout back into Calouni Village. So there's a lot being established at the moment, there's a lot being set up, there's a lot evolving. And I think we will make very significant progress in twenty twenty-two, particularly when we have dedicated staff who are fully funded under this scheme to help us deliver the programme in conjunction with the roads, the general roads programme. Thank you, Cahill.
Thank you, Mr Calfeather. Tom, so you.
Yeah, welcome to the response and look forward to the projects progressing in twenty twenty-two, particularly Castle Argyle and Tabbali Bali and Calouni Ridwea Station Route. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I believe we might, with your agreement, we might go back to number nineteen, just to approve in accordance with section six of the Housing Act nineteen and regulations that are under provision of assistance, New Grove Housing Association in the form of capital assistance scheme in the value of six hundred and fifty five thousand two hundred and eighty-five for dwelling at La Rasa Strand Hills Road. I think councillor O'Grady was looking for clarity on which La Rasa.
And I want to thank the executive for giving me such speedy clarity on that situation.
And we agree. Agreed. Okay, twenty-six, councillor Clark.
I refer this again, I think there's a report on route from leader and we have a one from the minister, so we'll just leave it to January to see what's going to happen.
Okay, thank you. Twenty-seven, myself and councillor Gilroy, councillor Gilroy, you can.
Yes, the report we got shows that the national broadband plan is falling behind on what was, what was agreed or what we were told due to your own motion last February, Cahill. It's disappointing that it's fallen behind on the very first leg of the journey and it worries me about the areas that are further down the line. And I think we need to keep pressure on. Now, the reply we got seems to only have one page in it and I've been talking to Nigel and he said there is another summary, so I'll ask that he maybe circulate that to all councillors so that they know what areas are being done. Broadband is urgently needed in these areas. These people have been waiting a long time. If the ones who are first on the list aren't getting it on time, the ones who are last on the list are going to be in serious trouble. It's working in a circular motion out from town, so it's starting here in Sligo and it's going out in a kind of about five miles from town. Everything should be covered in the first, in this first phase, which was supposed to be completed by the end of this year. But it's going to run into next year for all, for nearly all of them, and it's going to run later into next year for some, which is not acceptable. And I think we have to send that message out. There are some in West Sligo that are getting it from Ballina, which is also being serviced as a, it's a separate entity, but it's part of the county that will get served a bit quicker. But I think those of us who are representing areas who are on the periphery of the county are going to be a long time waiting to get broadband into these places. And the sustainability, the very sustainability of these communities depends on getting broadband. We're in a different world now, there's so many people who need to work from home, it's safer to work from home, all of these things. And you can't have it without the broadband, it just needs to be brought up to speed and as quickly as possible. And I think the message has to go out from this council that we all want that to happen as soon as possible.
Thanks councillor Gilroy, just from my own point of view and not to go over what councillor Gilroy said, it's a huge issue at the moment, as he said, and it's a personal issue, it's becoming a very personal issue to people in their homes and families at the moment. And the amount of calls that I'm sure we're all getting week after week, why is there nothing happening? What's going on? It has also become a huge issue in the past number of years, an even bigger issue because of a lot of people having to work from home and being advised to work from home. So I think the message should go out that this council are certainly doing everything they can to have the infrastructure and the providers here in Sligo and to have them here as soon as possible. Yes, councillor Clark.
It appears that the, that the power of the broadband itself is failing. Because when the continents go on the net, the reduces come into Ireland as well, which seems to be not a big issue. And these wireless providers, the likes of Three and Imagine and other ones, this signal, the signal has got terrible bad in the last six months because of that power coming from Europe and from the power base used in America. So it's an issue that is concerning, that if, even if it is rolled out, that our signal isn't going to have the right power.
Okay, councillor Maguire.
Thank you, Cahill. I want to support the motion. I think during the term of the last council, I had a motion before the council asking that we would try and engage with the ETB and other agencies to train people so that we had them on the ground here in Sligo, because this issue was inevitable. Everybody looking for the infrastructure to be put in place in their area at the same time leads to a demand on manpower that we inevitably couldn't meet. But I wholeheartedly support the motion. It's something, as we now know, that is absolutely possible. We wouldn't be able to join in today's meeting with that broadband and it affects every aspect of everybody's life now. So whatever we can do to try and improve it and increase the rollout as quickly as possible is to be welcomed. Thank you.
Okay, councillor Gilroy.
Yeah, just, I suppose to come back on what councillor Clark said there, I suppose really I'm talking about the wired broadband and not arguing with what he says at all. I'm talking about the wired broadband because that is what the government have decided, it was decided during the last government, but it's government policy to bring wired broadband to everyone in this state. And we have to keep the fight up to make sure that it comes to everybody in Sligo in a timely manner. And I suppose that's, so thanks for the support for the most.
Councillor Mulvey.
Yeah, thanks Cahill. And just to be brief and to look at support yourself and the Donald, sorry councillor Gilroy and councillor Taylor for bringing this forward, because it is vital. And I know recently even myself I got a booklet through the post saying that the broadband, national broadband rollout is coming. You know, I think people need to see, you know, and keep, as councillor Gilroy said, that we need to keep the pressure on because there's still so many places that have inadequate broadband. And I know even last week a young lad contacted me where he was due to go back to college and with the further restrictions, he was told he has to operate from home. So, you know, that's what they need. Okay, thanks.
Thanks councillor Helium, sorry, now I didn't see you putting up your hand.
Yeah, listen, I just wanted to be in support of the motion. We all know the importance of internet, especially in our small little towns and villages. And as councillor Gilroy says, if we're trying to encourage people to stay at home and work from home, it's important then that they have the right facility. So I think that it's something that we need to be pressing more on. Thank you.
Just, and just, I think I'll finish up on it, but the first plan that was rolled out, and we all have maps and we see the maps and we see the housing on the maps where it's supposed to be fibre to the home, I think it's very important that that is followed. In a number of places it's not being followed, it's going to the cabinet where it's supposed to be fibre to the home. And there's certain villages that that's happening in. And I think it's up to us to highlight that as well. And we will, and we will do for the future. Okay, that's agreed. Okay, we'll move on, councillor Gibbons, twenty-eight.
Cahill. I welcome the report that we received. Disappointed with the report, there's one aspect to it, because somebody somewhere is selling porkies in relation to it. The roads department will use with the ESP to establish the extent of the work, the costs associated with relocation of the ESP poles and questions. It is anticipated that such costs will be quite considerable as much as these main ESP network pole supply, Carteron area. Right, that's fair enough and I don't have a problem with that. Over the years, this motion has gone down in relation to the poles, in particular, I'm sure my colleagues, that was Sir William Borough Council, would know that this was always a hot issue, especially with the people within that area of the Carteron area, because the poles are right out onto the side of the road. Now, where I came in with the end of the porkies was last year, we had an update about the work that was being carried out on the junction of the N four, N fifteen, which went down to the Ross's Point Road as well. I asked that question of the engineer at the time and we were informed that that road, that that's work was included within poles was, three poles, which was blowgun into Carteron Heights. These poles have caused significant damage to cars, lorries, the bus cannot even get a straight run in, as soon as the bus comes down, if it's coming in from the Carteron area or it's heading out towards the Carteron area, if there's traffic coming, the bus has to take place to allow traffic to pass, it's going to lose its mirrors or some of the cars is going to lose their mirrors. The pole has been replaced in my lifetime in Carteron and I'm living in Carteron since about nineteen eighty-nine. That, I'd be probably under-exaggerating the fact that it's been replaced at least half a dozen times, the poles. If it's not a direct accident or collision that's hitting them, they're being chipped away the whole time with cars clipping them, wing mirrors and whatever else, and they do have to be replaced. A number of occasions, the electric cables came down on the roads, we got collisions with cars and yet it's still overlooked. And apparently I am annoyed that this council was told that this work was included as part of that works. And that's one aspect, and I'm looking for clarity, especially in relation to that, because I do know, every one of us that's around this table and especially the Sligo Strand Hills councillors would know the importance and the significance that these poles, the damage that they've been causing over the years. And it is, it's a hotbed of potatoes within that area. People came to me, I was one of the people that went on the radio, I support the whole thing of the junction, the work that went on between the N four and the N fifteen. And one of the things I moved back to people and says, I've had a commitment from the council, a public meeting or at the council meeting, that these poles will be dealt with. Now, we're coming back to this old same thing here, but we have consultation with the ESP, should have been done when this works. And I want somebody to look into this, to see was that actually part of that and is it a part of the works that hasn't been complete? Now, I'll move on to the yellow box. The yellow box is required outside of Carteron. And the reason that is, and especially on school days, as the kids are going to school and people are going to work and whatever else, outside of Carteron Heights, the traffic is built back up as far as Old Carteron Hill and a lot of people will not give space for a car to get out. At least if there's a yellow box there, it means that somebody can get out of Carteron Heights. And as the reality do, it's not a massive thing to ask. The other one that I brought to your attention, and I'm sure that every councillor here is aware of it, is you're driving in from Ross's Point, the road narrows about a hundred and fifty metres, the Sligo side of Scotchman's Walk. The road, the wall actually protrudes, you come straight onto this wall. It's all right for people to choose in that road on an everyday basis, but again, the amount of wing mirrors, damages that's on the cars and everything else, that was acceptable thirty, forty years ago when there's very little cars in the road. The volume of traffic that's on the road today and people coming to the Ross's Point area and everything else, it's not a very nice thing that to come on this and have decided a car clipped or that they'll end up clipping the mirrors. I know myself that one young lad came to me, he was after a brand new car and he actually destroyed his wheel hubs, he had to pull over that far, going out that road and he clipped the wheel hubs off the car. But that shouldn't be. And all it would require in relation to that is a reflector where that wall protrudes out, either that or a pole with luminous paint on it, just to give warning beforehand. And I suppose the fourth part of that motion that I actually have in there, Scotchman's Walk has become a very, very popular area and especially with the stress should be coming back into the evenings for people walking. People walking over that road are taking their lives in their own hands because they're facing uncommon traffic. And as they come to the junction, traffic that is coming in from Ross's Point to Scotchman's Walk and cutting over to the Bondurden Road, as they come around that corner, there's nothing to stop them, slow them down coming on that corner. Now, I remember a number of years ago, as my fellow councillors from town would remember, there was two women was actually killed on that road and in a very close proximity to that spot. And all I'm asking for in relation there is that warning sign or whatever else, or something just to slow down traffic, come into that corner, that people just don't think that they can come into that corner at thirty mile an hour and think that there's nothing the other side, there actually is. The people that's the other side is those pedestrians, it's actually abiding by the rules of the road, which is facing uncommon traffic. I'd ask you all to support the motion, but I would like a feedback on the whole aspect of that, that that works at least, how we did.
Okay, Tom, do you want to come in there?
Thank you, thank you, Cahill. Yeah, look, I'll clarify that issue for councillor Gibbons to come back to. My, my recollection is that it was hoped that those works could be done as part of the major road scheme, but that was dependent on being able to acquire some land by agreement to facilitate it, which didn't happen or we couldn't make happen. But I will clarify that for councillor Gibbons to come back to.
Councillor Healy.
Yeah, just some, second to motion, the four parts of this motion and each part of these motions is all about health and safety. And as I says, as councillor Gibbon has raised, if you see the poles going up that road, there's marks on them where buses, where lorries are hitting them and mirrors are getting broken, but also it's pedestrians walking on that footpath. And I think that what we should be calling for here is a road audit to be carried out, road safety audit to be carried out on that road on the recommendations that's put forward here by councillor Gibbons and to come back into the council on it.
Okay, so motion, sorry, agreed? Okay, we're going to twenty-nine. I see that if anybody is happy with the response, you know, if it's, if it's, if it's good response, we can probably agree it and move on from it. So twenty-nine councillor Gibbons again. A secondary, councillor Healy.
Cahill, very happy with the report, very happy with the report. But the one thing that I would say in relation to it, it is an issue that people originally came to me and I was in relation to it and I kind of felt like a fish out of water, that I was kind of in an area that's not part of my representation as such, but I will not refuse to help anybody, anybody strewn across. And when they came to me and asked me about this, they're worried about their children, they're worried about the old people, they're worried about people crossing that road. And I think myself we shouldn't even be looking at a special fund there from the national road start, we should be looking at putting measures in place to make sure that the people, in particular the children that lives along that road, have safe access into the park. And the reality, you know yourself, Cahill. have safe access into the park. And the reality, you know yourself, Cahill, that road is a very dangerous road. There's people coming in that road. It's, it's an awkward junction. I can understand that. There's two roads leading down on it. That's still be coming from the, we said it's like going into Ballymore and, but I do know that it's very awkward. But I don't think we should be looking, if we can get a special fund, then good and well, that saves a rope on. But we need to be looking at putting something into place before there's a standard on that road. Thanks very much.
Support the motion.
From my recollection, that had been brought up at a good many area meetings over a number of years and with different engineers. So it's good that it's going ahead. Thank you.
Thirty, Councillor Gibbons.
Cahill, I'm going to defer that. I'm going to defer that motion.
Thank you. That's okay. Thirty one, Councillor Healy.
Yeah, I'm going to defer that as well, please.
Jesus, we're deferring. This is getting serious. Thirty two, Councillor Gilroy. Oh, jeez. Might be having a meeting on the tenth yet, Councillor Maguire. Thirty three, Councillor Catherley. Second of a Councillor Healy.
Um, thank you, and I have received the report that Sligo County Council have made initial contact with TII in relation to the provision of a pedestrian crossing on the N fifty nine in Ballastair. Any project of this nature is subject to the approval of TII and the provision of appropriate funding. But I also, I'm still just very concerned about this. I think not only a pedestrian crossing is needed at this stage, I think some other form of traffic calming is also needed. I'm just asking if we can please keep the pressure on. I know that it's been on the agenda for a long time. But I cannot over emphasise how worried the residents are. In the village, they're worried in relation to the speed of the cars coming through the village. And they're also very worried about the, the speed of cars entering and exiting the village from all approach roads. And I actually received correspondence from a doctor who had to take care of an elderly gentleman who was knocked down in the village there a few weeks ago. And he, he lives there and he's very, very concerned about his children crossing the road and everyone else who lives there crossing the road. You know, numerous times a day going over to the shop and going to the different businesses and the different premises that are on all sides of the village. It's a very, very busy, vibrant village. But I just think that really something needs to be done very quickly. And I welcome the report, but I just want to emphasise that we really do need to keep the pressure on, not only for a pedestrian crossing, but also to have a road safety audit carried out and just to, to, to make infrastructure improvements, to address the speed of vehicles coming through the village and to look after the safety of pedestrians crossing the road. Thank you.
Councillor Healy.
First of all, I welcome this motion. I have a motion as well down in the missable on much the same thing. But I suppose just a couple of issues here. TII have been asked before and there were submissions made into it about the speed coming in from, from the church at Coronine. And we've also asked for that, for that speed to be pushed out past Corona. For the simple reason, a number of accidents have happened out around the church. And the community feel that the church is also part of the community. So that needs to be incorporated in it. Second thing is coming in from Kevin Round, coming in from that road, there is a pedestrian crossing. But it's all, all it is, is it's not a pedestrian crossing as such. What we're looking for is a right pedestrian crossing put in there. There's a little island put in the middle of it. And it's up to the, when the kids are walking across, what happens there is they don't know if they can go or something, and they're stuck in the middle. We need right pedestrian crossing put there. There's also a number of accidents has happened outside the school in Ballastair. And there's need to be looked at that. And what we're looking for as well, with the great work that has been done on the Caloonie to Ballastair side of it, is that there's need for a pedestrian crossing now on that road as well. And also, we've raised it here in this chamber, it has gone to the council and the, there was public consultation done overall in relation to pedestrian crossings in the middle of Ballastair village. Now, we had it down here on the council that TII were meant to push ahead and get this work done. This is nearly two and a half years now in the making. Somebody's going to be killed on that road and then we'll get money for everything. What we want to do is prevent that happening. We want to make sure that this work is carried out now before anything else happens. So I think that we need to be writing back to TII and seeing exactly what they're doing on a number of them points. Thank you.
Okay, Councillor Maguire.
Thank you, Cahill. I want to support the motion. I think the volume of traffic in Ballastair has only increased in the last number of months in particular. And really, people don't seem to be mindful at all that it's a busy village, that people are trying to cross the road. And it's, it's a constant flow. It's actually quite difficult to get across the road there. And I think what both Councillor Catherley and Councillor Healy have outlined is correct and that it is only a matter of time before somebody will be seriously injured. Thank you.
Okay, that motion is great. Councillor Gilroy, you want to comment?
Yeah, just to support the motion as well, all the villages around the county. And I have to say, I have a gut feeling that changing the approach speed to eighty from sixty to a lot of the villages with the last review of the, of the speed limits has not helped the situation in Ballastair or any other village that's on a national primary route. Thank you.
Okay, that motion is great. Thirty four, Councillor O'Grady.
Um, thank you, Cahill. Um, my motion is that Sligo County Council commenced the process of renaming Clarion Road to University Road. And the new Atlantic Technological University will be formally established on the first of April, twenty twenty two. It will be one of the largest multi-campus universities on the island of Ireland. The university will span the west and the north west via eight campuses initially with over two thousand staff. It will offer six hundred academic programmes for over twenty thousand students. This was announced initially by Minister Harris in October, twenty twenty one. And the college will increase the higher education access for people and drive and enhance regional development and increase opportunities for students, staff and local communities. This will allow people in the furthest flung counties in Ireland to obtain a university degree in their home place. I ask that my motion will be supported. And before I do that, I congratulate President Brendan McCormick for his involvement and Anne Higgins, who's a Sligo native, who was the Ulster Lions project manager for all of this, and this was a huge piece of work. So I ask for the support of my fellow councillors that we rename Clarion Road to University Road. Thank you, Cahill.
And I think is that's, I think in the, in the, in the response, it's, it's going to the Place Names Committee in quarter one, twenty twenty two.
Yeah, as in normal procedure, it will go to the Place Names Committee.
Okay, are we happy with that? Can we? Yeah.
The whole story with Clarion Road, right, initially was, the original name on it was an embarrassment. It was a sign and road is exactly what it's known as. When the Clarion Hotel, they spent, I think it was fifty four million or something going in there to build on it, we felt ourselves that it'd be, we were looking for a name and just to get away from that whole aspect. It wasn't a very nice name that was on it. And that's why it was named Clarion Road. So you could always look at Clarion Road, it was a temporary measure. And it was kind of to save an embarrassing situation. That's exactly where it would be. And I would one hundred percent support Councillor O'Grady's motion. I know it's going to the Place Names Committee. Thanks very much.
Councillor Bree. Second of a Councillor Boyle.
Obviously, second to the motion, I support it, but I, I think there was a decision made on that road to be called the Jack B Yates Road. As far as my memory serves me from the Name Place Committee.
Okay, Councillor Bree.
Cahill, Councillor Boyle is correct. I'm surprised that the Director of Service didn't say that in her report. She says the proposed motion from Councillor O'Grady will be considered at the next meeting, the Place Names Committee in two thousand and twenty two. But the Place Names Committee, as Councillor Boyle has pointed out, some months back, adopted a recommendation that the road be called after Jack B Yates. And there was some controversy because there was a number of other names. I had just become a member of the Place Names Committee at the time. But I understand that there was to be a plebiscite carried out on the rate appears on the particular road. So it's going to create a bit of a headache for the Place Names Committee, and it has to come back to this council.
Well, I'm sure, Councillor Bree, under your good guidance as chair, you will have no hesitation and in naming it University Road, I think it'd be very fitting that that, where the road is and within the, nearly goes through the end of, or as at the end of the campus. I leave it and I have no doubt, but you will get that sorted at the, at the.
And maybe for the Place Names Committee meeting, we could have clarity on what you're saying, Councillor Bree and Councillor Boyle.
Yeah.
And we could discuss that. Are you happy with?
But I would ask that there be no delay and I.
It's a matter for this council to pass it on and it is passing it on. It's a matter.
And we'll be coming back to the council again.
I think you're the chairman of the Place Names Committee, are you?
I am.
I thought you were, Councillor Bree.
Cahill will resolve it for us.
Thanks. Okay, we talk about it in the Place, in the Place Names Committee. Okay, thirty five, Councillor O'Boyle.
Thank you, Chair. Just, I'm not sure how many people had seen the missing children on RT, but it was a painful watch. And I think to put it into perspective, over eighty one thousand women were locked away. Nine thousand children died in mother and baby homes in Ireland. Seven hundred and ninety six children are unaccounted for in Tum. We had babies die in painfully and unnecessary deaths, illegally adopted, ripped from their mothers, starved, neglected and some left to die, which was pure cruelty. Yet we still have nobody held accountable for these crimes against vulnerable young women, people with special needs, victims of rape, ethnic minorities. And we know since twenty twelve that there are mass graves and we know crimes happen there. And instead of responding and seeking justice and getting the coroner out, the government's burial bill prevents or gives the coroner a lack of power to investigate. And the mother and baby reported itself also ignored the evidence because they failed to reflect what was going on. And stated that the real problem was not the state, but was the behaviour of fatters in the general community. Not the physical, emotional, sexual abuse or neglect that happened in these religious orders. And the redress scheme itself was callous and insulting to survivors. Yet to make things worse, the minister wrote to the religious orders to discuss how they might contribute. That in itself is shameful. We should seize the proceeds of these illegalities. These orders profited from the systems. Not only did they receive state payments, they participated in forced labour, which if you look at the Sean Ross home in Ross Gray, eleven hundred children died from typhoid because mothers were sent out to work as unpaid nurses and contracted it there. Human trafficking, the sales of babies for money and the way I look at it, countless murders youth neglect. These orders still have assets made on the backs of young mothers and children and babies. And where's the scheme to seize them for survivors? And while some of these people are dead, not all of them are, I feel criminal charges should be brought. This government, the previous government, all truth to survivors and those who have passed on. I think it is time to exhume the tum babies. I know there is a date or it's supposed to be sometime in twenty twenty two, and I would ask obviously for support for this motion. But also that if in twenty twenty two it's not started early enough, that we get a deputation or we even meet with the minister. Because I feel, after speaking to Catherine Carlos a number of times, age years, knowing that this is just lying there in a septic tank, is absolutely disgraceful and shocking. And then last night, I leave it at, I'll never forget that it was Mark McSharry at Frank Feen voted to seal away the records for thirty years like the Ryan Report and then to come out and try to deny what they did. So I would ask for support in this motion. Thank you very much.
Cahill, I wish to second the motion because, you know, I think we all agree that what occurred in the Tum Mother and Baby Home was outrageous and marks a shameful chapter in Ireland's recent history. Survivors, relatives and archaeologists have called for the site of the former institution in Tum to be excavated as a matter of urgency. Those involved in the test excavations in two thousand and sixteen and two thousand and seventeen have said a full excavation of the site needs to happen as soon as possible so DNA can be used to identify the remains. The small area of land excavated in sixteen and seventeen included a nineteenth century stone-built structure that we know was a sewage tank used for the treatment of sewage and where we know a significant quantity of human remains were interred. Catherine Carlos, whose painstaking research helped expose the Tum scandal and uncovered the bodies of seven hundred and ninety six babies and young children buried there, also believes that children's remains were buried in the ground underneath an area that's now a playground. And she too is calling for the excavation of the site to happen without further delay. And while it's recognised that legislation is required in order to allow exhumation at the site, there is ever growing concern that the government is not treating the issue seriously and hence the deliant delay in the legislation being adopted. I'm only second the motion.
Is that agreed? Sorry, Councillor Gibbons.
What happened was horrific. Nobody can deny that. I think every one of us is in agreement with. And I think myself, in this day and age and of the technology and everything else, DNA testing and what the rest of it, to try and identify how many children was actually buried. Every child deserves to have its own grave. Every child, every person, every mother that died in them homes deserved the dignity of a right funeral. We've seen it over the years. I seen it one evening on a programme on television and it showed that whole septic tank thing in Galway where the children were buried in it. But the nuns were put into these big lavish graves when they died. They didn't go to a septic tank. It was one aspect. But the one thing, and this is, I cannot understand it from our government. Anywhere else in the world there's to be classed as crimes against humanity. Doesn't have to be in this country. There's people, there's people still alive in this country. It's answerable for what happened there. And do you know what, reality is, it's constantly be trying to brush it in under the carpet. Government needs to get serious in relation to this. These people's carried out actions, there needs to be consequences. I would support this motion. I was at a record. Thanks very much.
Thirty six, Councillor Walsh.
Yeah, I think there's three motions running side by side on this that can be all taken together if you'd like. So thirty six, thirty seven.
Councillor McSharry isn't, isn't here though. We still take them, yeah? No, can't take it. I've deferred, I've deferred that. Can we take thirty six and thirty eight?
Yeah, I'd be brief anyway. Cahill was contacted by the President of the Student Union, like many members in here today relative to an assessment they carried out within the lone student population of safety issues that have come up. They have started an awareness campaign in conjunction with the department in relation to drink spiking. And as part two of that campaign, they had an initiative relative to safety issues surrounding the college area and the campus. And one of those issues is public lighting on their major walking routes. They've identified four that are of concern and I have spoken to the union on two occasions now. The Clarion Road, the Mall, Hazelwood Road and the Paddy Tibnan Road. And they would like a review of this to be carried out. I noticed from the reply, Electric Skyline will carry out a review of all these four areas. And I would ask that that be done as soon as possible relative to the public lighting. I know a lot of these lights in these current areas are the old type lighting and they will be changed in quarter, from the beginning of quarter four, twenty twenty two as part of the LED rollout being led by Mayo County Council. So I suppose the message that we want to send back today is that there will be a review carried out of the four areas and as soon as possible in relation to making these areas safe. And while we want to grow the student population, these are four areas where the majority of students live on campus or in private rented accommodation. And we have to ensure the students who in the main walk to and from college or walk into, from the town centre at night, that these areas are well lit. Thank you.
Councillor Catherley, unless you win because you've similar motion thirty eight.
Thank you. I'm not sure, did anybody second that motion, but I'd like to second it if, if possible.
You can second hers.
Um.
I'm going to second Marines then.
All right, okay, thank you. No, that's fine. I just couldn't hear. Yeah, I'm not going to go back over what Councillor Walsh has said. I think that all councillors were, were contacted on this in relation to student safety. It is an issue. I suppose it, we're better off to get it sorted before, you know, any negative news comes out about that area as well. So the students hopefully will be returning back to campus, hopefully after Christmas when things settle down. So I suppose it's just, and it's something that needs to be done, not only as well for students, but for residents who are using that and cyclists and pedestrians who are using that road very regularly as well. So just like to support the motion as well. And I welcome. the motion as well. And I welcome the reports and updates on it. Thank you.
Okay. Is that agreed? Motion?
Just to say that I fully agree with it. And I also advise the students to contact Sligo Bid because for purple flag, for night time economy and safety, they do audits of town and sometimes have streamlines of funding available. So I think that's be worthwhile for them as well. Thank you.
Tom, you indicated to come in there. Your facial expressions are letting the cat out of the bag there.
Ah, no, 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 no. Kehirlock, look, as committed to in the responses to the various nosemotions, we will get that survey done. And in fairness, Electric Skyline are very responsive in that regard. So we get that survey done. Obviously, the responses indicate that the funding of any works is the challenge. But, you know, I certainly don't want to put a negative spin on it. There are opportunities. Councillor Walsh has identified one in terms of the LED refit programme, which we hope will be underway this time next year. Secondly though, and it will come up in response to a later nosemotion on the cloud, there may be opportunities within the active travel programme in the years ahead to incorporate some lighting in terms of delivering schemes. So, you know, look, there are options, but the first step is to get the survey done and we'll arrange for that to be done as soon as possible. Thank you, Kehirlock.
Okay. Thanks, Tom. The motions are agreed. Agreed. You're happy with them? Yeah. Thirty nine, councillor Mulvey. I can second that.
Thanks, Kehirlock. And at the outset, I want to thank Ms Clare for the response that she's given me on this motion. And I also want to acknowledge the great work of all the community groups in and around the Ballymoot area. But I have been contacted by many concerned people in the area. As we have lost all of our banks in the town, we have closures of shops and that action is now needed to halt the further decline in Ballymoot. And I see in the response that the council has acknowledged that however Ballymoot community development sector hasn't been as active recently as heretofore. And this is the reason I brought forward the motion. A lot of people concerned that, you know, funding applications and funding streams may be missing Ballymoot. And I'm delighted that with the assistance of Sligo County Council and the CEO of Sligo Leader Partnership, both of whom I've discussed this with, and they have, they have come forward with a plan to effect positive change in Ballymoot, you know, and they both expressed their willingness to set up a new course in Ballymoot in the new year, which will hopefully reactivate and reinvigorate the community, the Ballymoot Community Development Group there. Because over prior to this, many years ago, there was great work and great investment in the town park, the old mill, actually the business park in Ballymoot, which is full to capacity and full of employment. And we also have the Art Deco, which unfortunately is sitting idle. And a lot of people are concerned that they don't want to see a decline further in the town. And any assistance, and I want to acknowledge the help of the Director of Services and the Chief Executive of Sligo Leader Partnership. And hopefully in the new year, we will see a programme, this programme rolled out in innovating communities that will invigorate and ensure that whatever funding streams are available, that they will be applied for and that they will come to the greater community of Ballymoot. Thank you.
Councillor Maloney, I'll let you in for it.
Yeah, Kehirlock, I suppose just to say that there is an awful lot of activity still taking place in Ballymoot. Unlike every other community sector, COVID affected activity in Ballymoot. It's fair more difficult to have meetings. It's impossible to do fundraising except online. So I think while everything may not be perfect, I think that the opportunity to have the innovating communities programme will help to re-energise the community sector in Ballymoot. And, you know, this programme is really designed by the people. It's, you can use this programme in whatever way is beneficial to the people that takes part in it. And it's not so much about Sligo Leader or the council coming up with, with an action plan. I think the people has to come up with an action plan. This has to be what's in the hearts and the minds of the community sector in Ballymoot. Otherwise, it will be undeliverable. So I think it's important that innovating communities run early in the spring and that people participate in a meaningful way in it. And that what comes out of it is an enhanced structure to support the people that's already working in Ballymoot in the community sector. And you have only to travel through the town and see the Christmas lights, there's funding for the town park, there's a lot of activity going on where the GE and soccer, that park and where the athletics club operate. So I think there is, as the report from Ms Clare says, there is a huge base of community activity in Ballymoot, but it's to fine tune it and it's to harmonise it and get everyone just singing off the one hymn sheet and working together to deliver on just a better strategic plan for Ballymoot. Thanks, Kehirlock.
Thanks, councillor Maloney. And just in support of the motion as well, look, we all agree that there's a, it's, Ballymoot is a great business town. And there's a very, very strong community sector with a large number of super volunteers working in that sector at all times. And it's important for us as councillors, and we have been doing to support that sector and support the work that they are doing in the town of Ballymoot and the surrounding areas, as we do in all towns and villages throughout where we come from. But I think councillor Mulvey and councillor Maloney make good points as well. You know, there, there are a number of buildings there that could be improved and could be enhanced. And there are, there is funding available to enhance those buildings. And I think that the community sector or the voluntary sector in Ballymoot is, is very much looking to improve those facilities and try and get them up and running in a successful and working way as well. And I think it's a, it's a timely motion. I think it's a good motion and I certainly am happy to support it. Councillor Healy.
Yeah, I just want to support the motion as well. And I suppose like all these groups that are out there, it's to know where you're going to get the funding. And as councillor Mulvey rightly says, leader is the best person to go through or the local authorities to see where you can get funding. There's plenty of help and support here for anything like that.
Councillor Baker.
Yeah, I'd just like to support the motion on that. But where I can see big problems and I can see it already, we're going to have to have a certain amount of funding going through these projects. There's going to be an awful lot of hard decisions. We can involve the best plans in the world, but it's going to take money to deliver. We have to be realistic too. So I think whatever we do has to be worked smartly. Thank you.
Councillor Walsh.
Yeah, I just too, I too want to support the motion. Thank you.
Councillor.
Thanks, Kehirlock. Just, just, Kehirlock, just to thank all the members that have supported the motion. And as you said, and I fully acknowledge and deal with a lot of the community groups in Ballymoot and have helped them with applications and informed them of grants of that. And, you know, I fully a hundred percent support them. But I think that we need a revigor of, you know, groups to just help them. And I want to thank, as I say, Sligo Leader for offering this. And hopefully any help will, will get to town because we certainly don't want any, any funding streams that are available. We don't want them to be missed to Ballymoot. Thank you.
Yeah, and we continue to, to work together for the betterment of the community there. Councillor Walsh, forty. Sorry, I lost.
Just for that one, please.
Thanks, Kehirlock. I was approached by a number of people and a number of community development organisations relative to the creation of a digital lab or digital space for children and young people in the county, particularly in Sligo Town, which is the centre of our population. The UK is very advanced at this, likewise in the north of Ireland. We're a little bit behind here. But while we have connected Ireland, been rolled, rolled out in terms of remote working hubs throughout the country, in particularly throughout this county, there is no defined space for children and young people in terms of a safe digital space. And safe digital space doesn't just mean throwing a computer in front of young people. It's about programming courses, modules, et cetera, et cetera, graphic design, video content, editing, animation, digital design, coding, creative thinking, robotics. And from the reply that I've received from the Director of Services, I want to thank you for the reply. And since this notice motion went in, there has been very positive dialogue. And I want to thank Trevor Sweetman and the ETB and Marie Regan, the General Manager for Oga, John Riley in the local authority, in the local enterprise office. And I'm hoping Sligo Leader will also row in. There has been a lot of correspondence over and back between us all. Everyone is very positive, positively disposed to this idea. And we have since identified a space for the creation of this digital lab in Sligo Town. And to move this forward, I suppose we have to come up with a funding source for a coordinator and tutors for this programming. But it's important, children and young people aren't left behind as we move into the digital future. In twenty twenty, we launched a digital, Sligo's digital strategy, twenty twenty to twenty twenty three. It's eighty nine pages and children and young people appear to be, have been left out of the strategy. And I'm sure that's not intentional, but certainly most local authorities now are looking at a space for children and young people. And while we aim to have be, have smart city status here in Sligo by twenty twenty five, we won't do that without having a space for children and young people. Four pillars of the strategy were identified at that point, improving digital skills, better digital infrastructure, increasing digital services and fostering the innovative economy. And I would ask that children and young people be to the fore for this. All the evidence in terms of these spaces now suggests that they improve children's wellbeing and mental health. And it's important that we in Sligo and this local authority take the lead on this. There will be a meeting coming up in the next few weeks with all the stakeholders. And I'm delighted, since this motion went in, the level of correspondence that has gone between the stakeholders. I want to thank John Riley again, Anne Marie Regan and Foroga, and Trevor Sweetman and the ETB, who have done a lot of work over the last few days on this. And as I say, we have identified a space. We now need to identify a source for funding, a programme coordinator and tutors and look into the programmes that can be offered in such a safe digital space for children and young people. Thanks, Kehirlock.
Okay. Councillor Lee, councillor Castle, you seconded the motion.
Thank you, Chair. I just long to support the motion. This is the future. It's the way it's going. I'd just like to add as well that there are excellent courses in our new technological university on computing and technology. And maybe we could also engage those staff as well and tap into their expertise that's there already because they really are leading out. The courses are the best courses in the country. And they have got awards, they have got accreditations. They, the graduates from those courses are highly skilled. Their skills are sought after. So maybe I think along with that, that brilliant list there for Oga and the local enterprise office and the male Sligo leader ETB and leader that IT Sligo or sorry, the Technological University, now the computing department there, be added to that list of resources that we have. And we're very lucky to have such a fantastic pool of expertise in Sligo. So, yeah, just to say that, and also the coder dojo courses that were run a few years ago in Sligo are particularly successful. So it does show that we do have the skills in the community. So hopefully the college will be able to, to help roll out on this lab as well for children and young people in Sligo. Thank you.
Councillor Castle, councillor Gibbons, I'm going to let you in.
Kehirlock, I'd have to hundred percent support this motion. And I suppose the reason that I would, our children is an investment and our young people. It's an investment in the future. And a lot of these young people, children and teenagers have missed out so much compared to each, compared to other generations due to the COVID nineteen. A lot of these kids were at home. They missed out on so much work in schools. They, I think the Department of Education will even verify that. And I see this as a way forward with youngsters is to get them involved in something that is the future, which is digital technology, design, graphic design. All of this has to be done at the training rooms that needs to be done on is the likes of a digital lab. And I am so, I'm so glad to see this motion brought up in front of us here today. And as I says, there anything to help with young people and kids. I think youngsters, they're going down the wrong road with a lot of digital products today that they're, they're not getting the full value from them. They're going, we all know ourselves, every child out there has a phone in their hand or whatever else. And the type of stuff they're going into is not, in a lot of cases, it's not really fit. It's of no advantage to them. At least with this digital hub, it means that this technology can be used and it can be brought to their, to their advantage and it'll help their future. And as I says, I'm glad to see this motion here, Stephen, and I'm glad to support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Maguire.
Thank you, Kehirlock. I'll be very brief. I think it's a very timely and good motion. I want to support it wholeheartedly. And just ask that maybe when the councillors are engaging with stakeholders, that they'd include the schools in this because they're going to be the primary source of people, I imagine, who'd hopefully use this service, both primary and secondary, and also maybe the HILS, the Home Youth Liaison Service, who I'm sure would be delighted to be able to avail of it. And I just want to congratulate councillor Walsh on the work he's done on it to date and acknowledge from the report, all the work that the Sligo Library has done in this regard to date. Thank you.
Okay. Is that agreed? Agreed? Okay. Forty one, councillor Mulvey.
Thanks, Kehirlock.
Seconded.
And just. Thanks, Kehirlock. And just at the outset, I want to make just one change there. I had the word caregivers in and I meant actually it was agency carers. Just to call on the county council to write to the HSE and the Minister for Finance, Pascal Donohue, to provide assistance to agency carers who use their own cars to visit the elderly and sick in their homes and people who live alone. And not to go through the whole motion on this, but fuel prices are at a record high. And some of the carers that I have spoken to are experiencing, as I suppose a lot of people are, that the rise in fuel is affecting their, their income. And I think this is something they have no, no control over and it continues to rise. So that we all know they provide an invaluable service and they save the HSE money. And perhaps more importantly, you know, they're, they're an invaluable service to the community. And particularly where elderly people now in the pandemic are at home and they're more dependent on the carers maybe to get groceries and while they're calling maybe two and three times a day. And a lot of the carers, it's short journeys they're doing. So their cars are actually racking up fuel costs, you know, that have never been as high. So it's something that hopefully they will be able to seek and they offer them some assistance. Thanks, Kehirlock.
Councillor Healy.
I'd support the motion. At the end of the day, these are frontline workers who have been out there working through the COVID and everything else. And I've, I've just one, the lack of carers as well in the area is second. There's been, I was talking to a woman there who was, needs two people to help carers come to the house to help lift the husband in and out of bed. They had to wait for a care to come the whole way down from Langford to help them in here in Sligo, take them out of the bed. He drove, what, an hour and a half down the road to do fifteen minutes work to drive back up the road. So, I mean, I asked him, I says, how, how was it working there? Well, he says, I don't know if I'm going to get paid for it. He says, but he says, I'm down here to help people. So they shouldn't be, definitely shouldn't be affected by, by costs. So I think it's, it's something that we should write to them and make sure that we're, we're here. Look, we're here standing up for these people. Thank you.
Okay, councillor Healy. Councillor Fox, did you want to come in?
Yeah, thanks, Chair members. Just come in briefly on that. Look, I agree, you know, I support what has been already said on this motion. Look, we're very fortunate to have the staff that calls to these houses, especially in rural based communities. I'd be very supportive of supporting these very hardworking people and very aware of, especially in rural based communities, where they have no alternative but to use a car to get to the house. So they, these, these people should be supported and it's beyond time now to support them. More should be done now. And it's, it's a very vital service to our elderly and many of these people are, are, you know, they're, they're so. these people are, you know, they're so helpful and so caring to our most vulnerable. And, you know, the elderly deserve this service, and, you know, they've worked hard throughout their lives, they pay their taxes and they fund the time, so, you know, they should be supported. And yeah, I'd be very supportive of it. Thank you.
Okay, councillor Gilroy.
Again, I'd just like to support the motion. This was brought up at the Regional Health Forum meeting recently by our colleague from Leitermee councillor Garn. It's a major problem, there is a serious lack of staff. Why is there a lack of staff? Maybe there isn't enough paid to people who are doing this very important work. And I think we should keep pressure on the HSE and all the service providers to keep this service up, and it's vitally important and hugely appreciated by those who get it.
Okay, that's agreed. The motion, agreed. Forty-two councillor Queen.
I'll second that, please.
Thank you. I got the reply from Miss Garn, thanks very much, Dorothy. As you know, that the RRDF, it's a very welcome project, a programme, but the funding is to the department, from the department to the council, is only 75%. And we are left as a local authority to come up on our 25%. And there are many of these projects now about to roll out around the county, important projects. But it'll be a serious challenge to this authority, to council here, to fund them. And as we are a region in transition, I think that Sir Humphries should look at the possibility of putting our fund up to 90%, if it's ever going to be achieved, if we're ever going to. Talk about, we have talked about regional balance development, all of that in the past. But these projects, these programmes are badly needed, but we could find ourselves in a year or 15 months down the road where we might have to prioritise some of them, and in fact, may not be able to fund them. Because we're talking about projects here, maybe a million euros, that's 250,000 on the council. And if the three or four then come in, or CE has some magic formula, it will create a major challenge for this council going forward. So I'm asking the funding to raise from 75 to 90%.
Councillor Gilroy.
Again, just 100% support this. You know, it's one of many things that could be done. This region needs positive discrimination. They've known for a number of years now that we're a region in transition, and the response has not been satisfactory. We're still not getting even our fair share, not a mind the extra that we should be getting into this region. And I think councillor Queen's proposal would be something that could positively influence the level of funding that could come in, because the local authorities can't take it on if they're only getting 75%. But they may be able to take on more of the projects if they got a higher percentage. So I support the motion.
Could I just add my support to the motion as well? You know, it's positive news when we see our successful applications, and I'd like to compliment Dorothy and the team, and all the teams in our, throughout our communities, for the work that they have done on these applications. And as I said, it's very positive news when there's a successful application, and you get the news that you're getting the money, and it's progress for towns and villages. But councillor Queen is correct, and also councillor Gilroy, it's very difficult for the local authority to carry out the work that is, that we have got through the RRDF and through some of the other funding streams at 75%, and they have to fund 25% of it. So I think this is a very, very important motion for this county at the moment, and I hope that it's adhered to. Can we agree?
Okay. Forty-three councillor Mulvee.
Thank you, Cahilluck. Yeah, this motion and calling on the Sligo County Council to write to the Minister from the Environment, Eamon Ryan, and the Commission for the Regulation of Utilities, just to seek clarification if people are obliged to have smart meters fitted in their homes, which have been rolled out for installation across the country at present, and if householders can decline this installation. It's just, when I heard about this, I just done a little bit of checking on it, and I note that in Germany, installation is only recommended if an existing meter is to be replaced. So they've declined it as an automatic thing that they have to be replaced. And I note in the UK, I think there's only a percentage of a take-up on them. Now, my fear with this is that I know in businesses where they have, we'll say, large energy and usage on machinery and refrigeration and all that, some of these, prior to this, had at certain times turned off a lot of the heavy loading machinery at peak times, we'd say five to seven. And the fear is that if these meters go in, that will there be a loading on consumers living at home, that you have peak times, I would say, people coming home from work, and they're putting on dishwashers, washing machines, everything between five, six, seven o'clock. And will it encourage people to have a low, that if there's a lower rate, I would say, 10, 11 o'clock at night, that people will be encouraged, or we'll don't put them on at the peak time, put them on at the later times? So that's just really as clarification as to know whether they are compulsory, whether people have the right. And I am concerned when I see that in the likes of Germany, you know, a hugely prosperous country, that they have declined them. So it's just clarification on that, and I suppose, what are the positives and what are the negatives for people out there? Thanks, Cahilluck.
Is that motion agreed? Agreed, yeah. I second it. Sorry, councillor Clark, 44.
Chairman.
Seconding councillor Queen.
This government have failed to help families get on the property list. I take that my motion is read as a status. My heart goes out to all those families that are homeless now for the Christmas, and that are in rented accommodation, that they've been asked to leave because the houses are going up in value and they want to be sold. There's huge pressure in every area in Sligo in relation to vacant houses, there's no vacant houses for anybody. The government have failed in their budget to address this issue. They've talked a lot about the squeezed middle. But my heart goes out to all these people, the nurses, the teachers, the guardie, the defence forces, people on the general workers on the average wage, can't qualify for a mortgage to buy a three-bedroom bungalow at the average price at the moment in this state. I mean, we're 100 years after we signed the treaty, and it just, people probably shouldn't have signed it, but they signed it. But the point about it is that we formed a republic, and here now, 100 years on, we're not looking after those. The people of the middle, earning from 27,000 to 50,000, that are paying huge tax, that are delivering for the economy at every aspect, and they're getting no assistance whatsoever from the government to get on the property list. And if these people, the squeezed middle, the teachers, the nurses, the guardie, the defence forces, the general workers were able to buy houses, then the lower income houses properly would be available for the people that are there. And it's this segment of people that are not being looked after. And I, you know, when we were here at a crucial stage, at the Infoware and the Western Distribut Road, and LIS schemes and LEO schemes, and I was asked to see contact Minister Ross at the time, because he was the Minister of Environment, and I was challenged, because he all thought I'd failed to get that meeting. We had a cross-party meeting of nine councillors, Mr Galfeather, and it was one of the most successful meetings that this council ever had. Now, I challenged Vina Fall to organise a meeting with their minister, O'Brien, and put these points to him in relation to the tenant purchase scheme, the affordable housing scheme, and the squeezed middle. And to have that assessment of the qualification for social housing to be adjusted, 12, 15 years after, should be done, redone. I mean, this is a huge problem for our state going forward, our economy going forward. And I know that there's people out there won't take up work because it'll take them out of the medical cards, the social housing, the apps. And we need to address that to allow our economy to grow. So I hope, and it's my information, that affordable housing will be only rolled out in eight counties. I don't know if Sligo will get any affordable housing, we don't know that yet. But I'd challenge the Vina Fall party to organise a meeting with Mr O'Brien, so we can put our case to us. And I know that it's very difficult to organise the meeting, but it's one we need to have. Thanks.
And you seconded the motion.
Councillor Clark, I think we, I'm on the issues, concern and opinion of family discussion. I thought about it. Cahilluck, I very confident you, Cahilluck, now to meet, to get a meeting with Mr Minister O'Brien.
I 100% agree with all your, with everything you're saying, councillor Clark, as you know I do, I had a similar motion in to this, I know, I hadn't a limit on it, or no incomes on it up to 50,000 a number of months ago. And I do, I do 100% agree that this is a serious issue at the moment, and that needs to be dealt with. You mentioned about affordable housing there. I don't think we've heard anything yet in this county, which is disappointing too. And I certainly will look to have that meeting, and that this council have that meeting, that we have a delegation to that meeting, to discuss how serious the problem is in this county and all over the country at the moment, I think. We have to say that that's where it is. Councillor Maguire, you want to come in?
Thank you, Cahilluck. Just to, I don't want to reiterate what's been said, I think councillor Clark has outlined it very succinctly, but just to wholeheartedly support the motion. It's a national problem, and we in Sligo are suffering it just as much as everyone else is. But yeah, I would wholeheartedly support the idea of having a delegation done. Minister O'Brien has a great tagline of Dara gets it done, so it'd be great if Dara could get it done for us here in Sligo as well. Thanks.
Okay, councillor Castle.
I'd just like to support the motion as well. Thank you.
Okay, is that agreed? We can move on.
Chairman, I'd like to thank everybody that supported the motion and spoke to it. And I'd like to acknowledge the people that protested out to the council building this morning in relation to the homeless situation in Sligo, and it's a problem. We know that some of the dereliction in Sligo has been occupied by homeless people, and the numbers are growing, and my heart goes out to them for the Christmas. Thanks, chairman.
We move on. Councillor Castle.
Cahilluck, this motion is clearly out of order, Cahilluck.
Have we a report? Councillor Bree.
Cahilluck, in my opinion, I would ask you to rule on it, the motion is clearly out of order. As you'll be aware, Cahilluck, any proposals or plans this council wishes to adopt must be consistent with the, both the national planning framework and the regional spatial and economic strategy. And the reopening of the Sligo to Galway Western Rail Corridor is one of the key objectives in the regional spatial and economic strategy for the north and western region. The regional spatial and economic strategy, Cahilluck, identifies the Western Rail Corridor as being of strategic importance, as it represents a key piece of enabling and sustainable transport infrastructure for the region, that presents an opportunity to affect transformational change in the realisation of the Atlantic Economic Corridor. And furthermore, Cahilluck, it includes a very clear objective to deliver the Athon Ride, Chum, Claremore, Sligo rail line to an appropriate level of service and to a standard capable of facilitating passenger and freight transport. And if we look at the motion in front of us, submitted by councillor Castle, we note that it proposes that our chief executive request a meeting with the chief executive of Mayo County Council to examine whether Mayo County Council might explore the possibility of extending a greenway, bond the closed railway from Balahi to Claremore. Now, apart from asking the chief executive officers of both councils to ignore the regional spatial and economic strategy, it's also an attempt to undermine and subvert the democratic process and the role of elected representatives. Councillor Castle should at least be aware that it is the elected representatives who formulate policy, not chief executives. And ironically, the only role the chief executive officer has is to take action if a regional or national policy is contravened. So councillor Castle must also remember, Cahilluck, when this council was considering the current county development plan, we received correspondence from Mayo County Council telling us in no uncertain terms of their opposition to a greenway on the Western Rail Corridor. And despite this, and despite the key objectives in the regional spatial and economic strategy, we have this motion before us, asking the most senior officials of the council to act outside his remit. And Cahilluck, I'm long enough here to remember the fiasco regarding the proposed Caromore landfill site, which ended up in court, costing the council a small fortune. And we all remember the Lizadell case, and now we have this motion suggesting that the regional spatial and economic strategy be ignored. Now, do we want this Sligo County Council ending up in court again, Cahilluck? And only last week, the Minister for Transport, Eamon Ryan, and the Minister for Infrastructure in Northern Ireland, Nicola Mallon, invited members of the public to have their say on the future of rail on the island of Ireland as part of the All-Ireland Strategic Rail Review. And citizens from throughout the 32 counties, city and county councils, regional authorities and many other bodies will be making submissions before the deadline of the 20th of January.
Councillor Bree, I think we have your point, to be fair. Yeah, I think we have your point, and I'll let you go there with a full spiel, to be honest, okay? Because, because as, yeah, but as councillor Grady, as councillor Grady has said before, yeah, look, as councillor Grady has said before, you're a wise man, but you used your wisdom very well there, I can tell you that. Councillor Castle, if you want to come in to maybe come against that.
It's on the agenda, I didn't get any correspondence to say it couldn't be put on the agenda, I think it's a very valid motion, comparing it to Carol, wherever, Carol Moore and Lizadell, I've never heard, I've never heard anything like it in my whole entire life. So the motion is, and I'm looking for a report on it, please, that's the first thing, because it's on the agenda, and I've asked for a report. Is there a report on it, first of all?
No, no report. Can I, can we take the motion with what has been said? See, do you want to come in on that, or is that?
I suppose, look, from my view, just to be clear with all the elected members, I have no intention of going against the RSES. My role, and the role of the council and the executive, is to make sure that we do follow national policy and also regional policy into developing the development plan. Because if we don't, we'll end up with an instruction from the OPR that we have to follow national policy. There is no report to this item. There are many differing views, as I've already acknowledged and understood from being in the county for the last three months around the greenway, it's a very sensitive issue. But in relation to producing documents, I can assure you, we won't be ending up in court, we will be following national policy.
I welcome that, I welcome that statement by the chief executive, and he's absolutely correct, that we must adhere to the RSES, the regional spatial and economic strategy. And in that context, this motion is absolutely and totally out of order.
Cahilluck, could I come in there and apologize? Apologies councillor Castle, because I know that in the past, I've actually, you know, prepared responses to notice of motions on Sligo Greenway. So apologies about that, because I had assumed it was just calling on, maybe a report wasn't warranted. So I certainly can prepare a notice of motion. And absolutely what councillor Bree said, and what the chief executive said, that there is an objective in the RSES in relation to the rail. However, there is also an acknowledgement within the Department of, what was the Department of Transport, Tourism and Sport, and within the Department of Rural and Community Development, that a greenway is permissible on that part of the railway, which is, I suppose, part of the Sligo to Claremore's line, and particularly the one that, and all members know, that we are already advancing a proposed greenway, and working on the technical aspects of it, the design of it, at this point in time, to advance a greenway project from Calune to Balahi. That is a fact, there is nothing that we're doing that is contravening the RSES, we're quite well aware of the objective of the RSES in relation to rail transport. There is, however, a mention of the greenway in the RSES, and there is an acceptance at department level, both the Department of Tourism, Transport and Sport have actually approved funding for the technical assistance to help Sligo County Council develop the greenway, the technical aspects and the design aspects, to bring it to the stage where we will have planning permission and all of that. That is accepted by the department, and as you know, it would have been mentioned at the budget meeting, that the administration of that technical assistance funding of 300,000 that we got is now handed over to Transport Infrastructure Ireland. So this is quite well accepted, quite well known, it's not contravening any national policy or whatever else. So I do apologise. So I, I do apologize councillor Castleley and Cahill, look, that I didn't have a report on it. I actually wasn't, I just had assumed that a report wasn't required and I apologize for that. But I certainly will go and prepare a report. I know at the end of the day, it, it, it is calling on the, the chief executive to meet with the Mayo chief executive. We are in discussions with Mayo County councils ourselves in relation to a greenway. And we're also in discussions with other counties in relation to have it, to providing that necklace of greenways around, no, this, that would, which would be a very long-term approach to developing a necklace of greenways and all of these greenways linking up. And that's part of national policy for greenways. So a, a greenway on the, that part of the railway route from Calounay to Balahi is accepted at a national level by government departments at this stage.
Councillor Box, did you want to come in?
Thank you.
No, ca- I, I.
Cahill, look, there's a wee bit of confusion.
Yes.
Ms Clark was talking about the rail link from Calounay to Balahi. That isn't on the motion. The motion is about from Balahi to Claremore. It's the area in Mayo. And Mayo County Council actually wrapped our knuckles when we were discussing this at our last, when we last adopted a county development plan. Because in our county development plan, in our initial draft, there was a reference to a greenway from Calounay to Claremore. Mayo County Council came back to us in no uncertain terms and told us to, to delete any mention of a greenway from Balahi to Claremore. Mayo County Council are very clear on it. There has been no discussions with Mayo County Council about providing a greenway from Balahi to Claremore. I would like to place that on record. There has been no discussions whatsoever. And in fact, only in the last few months, the members of Mayo County Council unanimously adopted a, a resolution for their, for their new development plan, insisting that the rail would go ahead and proceed without any greenway. So we cannot interfere in the internal affairs of Mayo County Council. And the chief executive officer shouldn't be asked to do something.
I think we are. And I, just one second councillor Castle, councillor Clark, I'm going to let you in here.
Yeah, I think that, eh, Ms Clark is, 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 if I'm reading correctly, that the motion isn't out of order, that it is acceptable in Sligo. And I think what Rory Castleley is trying to establish is this reciprocal situation in the, on the rail line in Mayo, as we have in Sligo in relation to the department's guidelines. And if that's the case, the motion is, is, is in order. Eh, I, I'd like for, just to further clarity, I would suggest that, that the Mayo County councillors, the public reps in Mayo are more anxious to bring a rail line to Knock Airport than a greenway. And I think that's, that's where councillor Bree's point would be well made and that we shouldn't interfere with, with them. But is, eh, at the same time councillor Castleley is just asking for clarification and to see if there is any cooperation with the Mayo executive in relation to the, the Nicholas Greenway that Dara DeClare talks about. Thanks.
I'd love to see and hear again.
Yeah, I've read the standing orders and it says here, when any notice of motion is obviously out of order, illegal or contains unbecoming expressions, such a notice of motion should be referred by the meetings administration to the Cahillok or Les Cahillok. I think what, if, it's, it's a long notice of motion. But I think really all you're asking me to do is to meet with my opposite number in Mayo County Council.
And that they might explore the possibility.
Now, I, I don't see that as out of order. Because you meet regularly with your counterparts to discuss various projects and everything else. And in no way would we be looking to put in our development plan anything that impacts on Mayo County. We're going to be concentrating on our own county and we will be following the rules.
Councillor Watch, I, I.
Cahill, look, we spent a lot of time on it. I'm happy to second the motion. It's not out of order. There's nothing wrong with the motion. And we shouldn't be dictated to by Mayo County Council. They've been referred to about six times now already. The members around this chamber are elected by the people of this county. This motion is nothing than a question in relation to a strategy. There's nothing, there's no issue with this motion. And all this is, is some sort of a pro-railway speech that we've just heard. And it's vital, it's vital that this county and the members in it, and it goes out today that we're very supportive of both greenway projects in this county. And, and, and the railway is a separate, it's a separate debate. But we have, we have two pieces of funding, one for the SLNCR, one for the Sligo Greenway. We've seen how successful the Greenway Group last week that have been successfully set up in Calounay and how supportive all the voluntary groups and sporting clubs have been towards, towards that group. Eh, the message should be sent out from this county that we're very clear in support of the greenway.
Okay, councillor Bree.
I just send a message back now because we're getting carried away.
Yeah.
Eh, I guarantee you, there's, there's no talk about a railway. But I guarantee if the decision came in here of, was between railway and greenway, that if Mike and Goa were, a lot of the people are thinking. And I just ask people not to be ignoring councillors. Because at the end of the day, eh, it's funny the way things can go at the end of the day. That's all I'm saying. We're, we're jumping ahead of the gun, but that's all I have to say on it.
Thanks councillor Bree.
We can waste time here on that.
No, no, councillor Castleley's, councillor Castleley's motion, and I'm going to let her speak now. And I'm going to allow the motion.
Yeah, eh, well, that was a big ado about nothing. What we want is.
I'll come back to you.
We want our jobs for this region. That's what my number one priority as a councillor is to create and to help promote the area and create an, an environment for, to enable people to come and invest and to travel and to, and for jobs to be created. I think that's the number one priority of the local authority. In other counties and in other regions, with cooperation between, you can see between Limerick and Cork and Kerry and all other counties down the country, there is collaboration. And disused railway lines are extended across county borders. And it makes sense. And it's the jigsaw that I speak about regularly, about putting the pieces of the jigsaw together. Because the infrastructure is there already. Now, to just let people, eh, make people aware that, and it is not an argument against a rail. The actual motion that I had proposed, the last line had said that there is funding available for a greenway, which would furthermore protect the route from lost to public ownership, which until further time as a railway might be possible. So actually, the greenway ensures that the route is kept in public ownership because there is encroachment on some parts of it. And that will continue unless we keep it in public ownership. So that's the first message out there, is that should funding become available, and that is in the Irish Rail licensing agreement with the local authorities, that the infrastructure will be handed back over. That's, that's a legal agreement, so there's no argument there. But just to draw people's attention to the fact that, eh, this is a regional project. It's not a county project. People won't come and, and come into cycle in, in, start in Calounay and end in Balahi and go back again. It did, they'll go where they can cycle for a few days. And that's the whole function of, and the purpose of the Fall to Ireland strategies. Every single one that you meet, the, the reason why they exist is to promote projects that keep tourists in the area so that they stay and they spend. And the greenway has shown that tourists stay and spend. And again, that's all about job creation and that is immediate. And we mentioned it at the, the Limerick, or at the budget meeting, the Limerick Greenway was opened in the summertime and they have had two hundred and fifty thousand visitors since the summer. Now, are we going to say no to two hundred and fifty thousand in a season? And all the money that they are going to spend? Are we going to deny our businesses and our communities and our regions and our, our villages who have, who have, who are dying on their feet because of the lack of investment over the years? And this is an opportunity that we have to have this money for, for nothing. For the bang for buck that you get for investment in the greenways. That, it's paid back in literally twelve months, eighteen months. That has been shown. So it's not, like, I don't, this, this whole argument about greenway versus rail. The greenway in, in the short term will bring in funding and will create jobs. And just to let people know, and I'm going to finish on this chair, because as, as you know, I feel very passionately about it. Just to let people know, because some people might not have read Irish Rail's report from last week. They published a new national rail freight strategy. And in it, they said, there is no proposal to invest any money in the Western Rail Corridor for the next twenty years. So now is the time to get this infrastructure working from the region on developing a network or a necklace or the connecting the jigsaw pieces together. So for the next twenty years, while we're waiting for funding, possibly for a new railway line, because you're talking about five hundred million euro as opposed to about ten million euro to create jobs immediately. So for the next twenty years, while we're waiting for this, we can have those jobs. We can have people coming into the areas, into, into this area. And that's why, that's why I have that motion down. So there's cooperation between counties, the same as there is cooperation and collaboration between counties in other parts of the country. So that we are not missing out on the millions and millions and millions of euro that is spent in other parts of the country. Thank you, Chair, for giving me the time.
Yeah, councillor Healy. Yeah. Yeah. Continue, continue, continue.
Yeah, eh, just in relation to the CEO's meeting, I, I request now that what we should be doing is meeting with the elected councillors over there in Mayo. Eh, that's what we should be doing. And I'd say that we've put this motion, eh, don't put this motion through today. Let's meet with the other councillors in Mayo, like the CEO is going to meet with his CEO. Let us meet with the councillors over there and get their views on it.
He didn't say he was meeting, he said he wouldn't.
I, I, actually, I never said I was meeting the CEO. I think, what, if you actually go back, Dorothy actually said, channels of communication were already open with Mayo.
Yeah.
So that's already happening. So it's happening at a level in both organisations anyway. I said what the motion asked me to do. I didn't say I was doing it.
Well, I, I request that we meet with the councillors in Mayo on it. And also, eh, this is here, the route would be lost to public ownership. As, at present, Sligo County Council has the ownership of the railway line as well as Mayo. They're under our ownership at the moment, so I can't see how it could be lost there. So I think that we should be looking at this and meet with our counterparts in Mayo and have a discussion on it. Because at the end of the day, they have to make a decision and then I think it's only right that we, we support them like they support us.
Councillor Gibbons.
I'd ask people to approach this very carefully. We all, it's not being smart. And it was mentioned here already. Hold off a second, I'm speaking.
Councillor Castleley, you can come back when.
I remember a number of years ago, and it was brought up here, and it's not everybody, it'd be very familiar with it. And was councillor Bree mentioned it, was Caramore. Caramore came in front of this council and all of a sudden, eh, it was decided at the time was to put a tip out into the old quarries that was out there in Caramore. People brought up the challenge against the council from that area. In the courts here in Sligo, Sligo County Council won this case. It was brought to the High Courts and there was research, there was a research carried out. And thank God those people did do that and I'll tell you exactly why. And they won their case. Because it was through the excavation that was done and the research, it was shown that the water table in that area fed into Lock In, which supplied the whole lot of Sligo. We lost that, the Sligo County Council lost that case. I do not want to see a repeat of us losing more money. We lost, no, I know exactly.
We're not going into a case for this, we're not. This is, it's a motion, it's a motion. And them, them things start as a motion too, yes, I know.
All I'm asking is that we're very careful on how we tread with this. And that's the whole of it.
Sorry, it's not, we're not building a nuclear power station here. We're trying to put in a greenway to create jobs.
Okay, councillor Gilroy.
I guess some councillor Castleley didn't ask that the councillors from Sligo meet the councillors from Mayo as the people who formulated.
Councillor Gilroy, that's. We can come back to that councillor Bree. Councillor Gilroy wants to come in. It's ridiculous.
Put down that motion. My motion is, and that's the word, you can have a vote on it, but that's my motion and I'm not changing it because it's not out of order. If you want to put down another motion about councillors meeting, that's fine.
Councillor, that's councillor Gilroy, councillor Mulvey and councillor Maguire still want to come in. And I'm going to afford them the time. We'll have this debate again in probably three months' time. I'm certain sure of it. And it goes the same way every time. Right, councillor Gilroy, in you come.
Thank you very much, Cahill. Um, greenway, I feel, should be primarily designed on the basis of linking places of interest. Rather than just being proposed simply because it's a piece of convenient infrastructure available, for example, an abandoned railway line. However, if an abandoned rail line, other than the Western Rail Corridor, is not going to be reopened and links the places of interest and enables support and economic and social opportunities along the way, then it's worth considering. The Calounay Greenway gets support and also on page one 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 of the RSES. There's potential for a walkway cycleway connecting from Sligo to Calounay and can also serve as a smart travel commuter route. There would be a potential for this piece to link with the similar regional scale greenway on the closed or abandoned railways in the vicinity, such as along the abandoned Enniskillen, SLNCR. I think we have to remember that we adopted these regional planning objectives into our development plan. And the people who voted for them are now saying that we should ignore them. It's explicit, the RSES and our county development plan by, voted for by the members. And it's interesting who voted for it and who voted against it. But it's explicit support for the reopening of the Western Rail Corridor. Now, the problem with, with that is that our minister for transport does not have, I'm not going to use the word, but you all know what I'm thinking of, to, to take the decision to call it an abandoned railway. Because until some minister for transport does that, this is going to be bounced around from left to right and over and back. And I can tell you, there isn't a hope of getting regional approval or national planning approval to put a greenway on the railway line. It's not going to happen while that's in our county development plan. So either we take that out, but you all voted for it, or a number of you voted for it. It's explicit that we're supporting the Western Rail Corridor from Sligo to Athonrye. And you voted for that at the time and you all vote, eh, not all, there was five of us voted against it. But that's what's in there and it's in our county development plan. And we're arguing against our own plan. That's what we're doing. And we're asking the chief executive to often do something. So I just think we have to think about that. And the fact of the matter is, the current minister isn't doing it. His predecessor, Mr Ross, didn't do it. His predecessor, Pascal, I can't think of it, Donahoe didn't do it. And Leo Varadkar didn't do it. So we're going back for the last ten years. None of them say it's gone. If it's gone, if you're right that it's never going to be done, then fine, call it a, an abandoned railway line. But it's disused at the moment and that's the term they're using. They're the ones that get paid the ministerial salaries and the ministerial pensions to make those decisions. Not us little councillors in Sligo, I can tell you. But we have our little bit of power. And I think if this goes through, I think you can expect that there will be a reply from the regional assembly, because it will be on the agenda here. If we try to stick our nose into Mayo's business, it will. I can guarantee you, the chairman is a Mayo man and he's going to have it on the agenda. I guarantee it. And we'll get the rap back from there if we go sticking our nose into another county.
Councillor, councillor Mulvey.
Yeah, thanks Cahill. Look, and I, I read by the motion that, eh, the latter body might explore the possibility. Now, to me, that's a discussion. And I have full confidence in our CE that if asked, and if he decides to discuss this with his counterpart, there's nothing wrong with talking. What's wrong with talking and moving something, whether it be forward or not? Any discussion is positive. I was the very one in two thousand and fourteen in this chamber called for a feasibility study on the disused railway line. I've grown up for over forty-plus years looking at a piece of infrastructure that has been encroached on constantly. Every day, every week, every year, it's disappearing. And I have to say, in fairness to councillor Castleley, she has said in her statement, you know, that, eh, if the money is there for a railway to come back, and I have always said that, I'm not against railway. But if there's two hundred and fifty million plus, put it into it. Don't have another forty years of looking at a piece of infrastructure lying idle. The positivities of a greenway for young and old, from a child when they can start their first steps up until the eldest citizen in this county are huge. And if every other county is reaping the benefits of greenways, why is Sligo going to be left behind? Why are people objecting to it? Why look at something lying idle when everybody, and I'm not going to say. Why are people objecting to it? Why look at something lying idle when everybody, and I'm not going to say whether, I don't have the full exact, but I know it was stated here that it would connect Knock Airport to the railway line. I'd certainly love to see a connection between the disused railway line and Knock, but my understanding is there's seven kilometres of a difference there from the railway line. If the money is there for the railway line, put it into it. Don't have us looking at another forty, fifty years of nothing. Lying idle, that's no use to nobody. And the fact that it can be retained and protected for public ownership, that is my main concern that it is. Thanks, Caherlock.
Councillor Maguire.
Thank you, Caherlock, I'll be brief. I think what we've been told is that this motion does not contradict or conflict with the RSES. And it is proposing a discussion and nothing more. And in my view, the more greenway we can put in and the interconnectedness of this, the more likely it's to be successful. So I will be supporting the motion.
No, well, look at. Tom, did you want to come in? Your hand is still up, but I'm not sure whether it's up by mistake. I think it's up by mistake because I asked him before already.
Can I ask clarification?
Councillor Queen.
No. Caherlock said we'll be at this again in three months' time.
Right.
Right. I understand from social media, there's activity to form, to create a greenway from Calouni to Temores or to, to Belahy, Belahy, right. I do, I do agree with councillor Bree regarding getting involved in Mayo. I think we'll stay out of Mayo at this moment in time because we have nothing to develop in our own county first. Now, where are we with the proposal for the, because they'll have to come into the council chamber anyway, we decide all this in the day, elected members, there wasn't. Is there a possibility that there's funding that coming soon for a greenway? Is it years away, months away, or when? That's the first thing I want to know. Where are we in all that whole thing? And we know about the railway, the track and all that. And the reason councillor Gilroy, we've done what we've done at the time, is to protect the railway, but we didn't say we were going to, we were anti-greenway, because it's a kind of a fudge. But anyway, we're not going to that here going today.
Councillor Queen has asked a question. Councillor Bree, you wanted to ask a question.
Just a query, a clarification from Miss Clark. She said there, she is in constant communication with the Mayo County Council, chief executive or officials. Is she, in that context, is she aware that the members of Mayo County Council are absolutely and totally opposed to a greenway being constructed on the railway track? I'm sure if she is in communication, they would have conveyed that information to her, that there is absolute and total opposition.
Okay, we'll ask that question. Councillor Healy, have you a question?
I have. My proposal that us councillors meet with the Mayo councillors before this motion was.
You can put that down.
Do that before the motion goes through. Listen, 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 councillor Cassie has a motion here. We'll vote on the motion after, we'll get answers, answers to both questions from Miss Clark, if you can, Dorothy, please.
Okay, just so that you're aware, there is quite a bit of work being done, I suppose, from a technical perspective along the line. At this point in time, we are looking into things like bridge crossings, where there needs to be, where maybe some lands have encroached, where, where there needs to be maybe cattle, where there need to be cattle passes. All of that kind of specific detail along the line from start to finish, from Calouni to Belahy, is being looked at. We have an executive engineer who is practically full-time working on this. We are engaging consultants to do the environmental assessments, all of the things that will be required and the documentation, which is quite extensive, to bring it to planning permission. We have to undertake a natural impact assessment on the whole line. And that will require loads of different studies in relation to wildlife, flora, fauna, et cetera, just to make sure that we are adhering to all of the habitats directive and all of the other directives or legislation that's out there in relation to the natural impact assessment. All of that work is being progressed slowly but surely. And as well as that, there is COVID restrictions allowing consultations with individual farmers, particularly where there might have been encroachment, or where there's cattle crossing, where there are some lands, some farmers' lands might have actually been divided by the railway.
I know, Dorothy, you're on a high to the effort to.
Time that will be going for the preparation of a natural impact statement and planning permission. We hope that by the third quarter of twenty twenty-two. Now, in relation to our work with Mayo County Council, yes, we're not, I'm not in touch with the chief executive of Mayo County Council, but I know my work colleagues here are, we do quite a bit of work with Mayo County Council, particularly on that whole recreation, adventure, tourism area. One of what we're talking about is certainly the greenway and how we can link. And we're talking about longer-term plans here, particularly in relation to greenways. We would love to have a greenway like what councillor Casterly described that's happened in Limerick with the reopening of that. We would love to be able to market a greenway here for tourists and all of that. But we are talking to Mayo and we would certainly like a link to be provided to Knock Airport. We are quite well aware that Mayo County Council may not be as supportive of a greenway on the Western Rail Corridor. However, our discussions with them, and they are at a very practical level, are in relation to, well, how can we progress long-term, perhaps this, to link up the the greenway, we'll say, from Belahy to perhaps the Western Greenway. So there are things being discussed, but no plans are taking place in relation to particularly Knock Airport, perhaps Calchima, Swinford, and linking it up even with the Monasteries of the Moi and all of that. There are all the things that are kind of being discussed, but as I said, no plans are being.
Okay, okay, well, that answers councillor Bree's question.
Because Miss Clark has said that she is aware that Mayo County Council is not supportive of the greenway on the Western Rail Corridor. So what in the name of goodness would we be asking the chief executive to go off and talk to them? When Miss Clark knows and every official knows that it's nonsense. It's ridiculous. This motion is ridiculous.
Councillor Queen, and you asked a question, that how far down the road could. Mike.
Dorothy, and you're doing your best, and we're talking about faunas and birds and bees and all that, and landowners. We're talking about years before we see a greenway from Calouni to Belahy. I think I'm being realistic there, and I think there's a lot of political going on about this greenway. And I would say to people watching all, calm down, let the process take its course now. Let the officials and let the experts do the report, come back here to us. If there's funding available, we'll make a decision whether we're going greenway or railway.
We won't.
It'd be years away. It's obviously two or three years away. So I think the last day is motion, and we're getting here, we are now, we're here, talk about this here now.
Yeah.
And, you know, it's virtually any pointless, but anyway.
Right, go ahead, see.
Just to reiterate, right, nothing illegal will be done. I think that's really important, that message goes out here today, right? Everything we do will be done within regional and national policy. I think it's also worth remembering, the county development plan is not that far away and will be coming before you very soon. Right, within the first six to seven months of twenty-two. So there'll be plenty more discussion about what it means for Sligo, and I am purposefully saying, Sligo.
No, you've asked it. You've asked, everyone has asked their questions now. We took the, we took the motion, so the motion has to go to a vote. But before it goes to a vote, can I just say? Every time this comes in here, we do debate it for an hour. Now, we're no further on, and councillor Queen has said that. We're no further on to where we, the study that's been done at the moment would support both, if it had to be done, whether it was a greenway or a railway. Are any of them really short-term? Maybe not. Definitely the one that would be more short-term would be a greenway. But because of the way we debated in this chamber all the time, we'll have neither. And that's probably what's going to happen. But I think a short-term, personally, as well, and I'm not afraid to get off the fence on this, and there are a lot that are on the fence. I think our short-term proposal for a greenway is the correct one. And that's not because I'm against railway either. Of course, I'd love to see a working railway, absolutely I would. But I think the short-term option is a greenway, and I think if this council were to get off the fence and agree that in the short-term, then I think that we might have it a lot quicker. And that's a personal opinion. Now, we've a motion in front of us that we're going to take a vote on, and Kevin, I'm going to ask you to call the roll, please. Not anything, no, no. The manager has already given us that, that nothing illegal will be taking place. You can bring your proposal in as a motion, as a separate motion, yes, if you want to. At the next meeting or whenever you like, absolutely. Kevin, call the roll.
Councillor Baker. I can hear that, sorry. Sorry, sorry, I think you. Councillor Bree. Councillor Casterly. Councillor Clark. Councillor Connolly. Councillor Fox. Councillor Gibbons. Councillor Gilroy. Councillor Healy. Councillor McCarry is absent. Councillor Maguire. Councillor Maloney. Councillor Mulvey. Councillor Abay. Councillor Grady. Councillor Queen. Councillor Taylor, far. Councillor Watch.
Far.
Thank you.
Okay, the motion is, sorry Kevin, you want to give the numbers?
Eleven, four, six against.
Eleven, four, six against, okay, the motion is carried. Forty-five, councillor Maguire.
Sorry, forty-six. I have it down as forty-five here.
Thank you, Caherlock.
We'll go back to forty-five again.
I'll try and be brief on this. I know the report, the report says we'll put it on to the agenda of the JPC. But just to inform the council, I've already had a public meeting with three members of the Garda Shiacana. Inspector Paul Concoyne, Angela Cummins Sergeant, and Garda Enda Devaney, who were very helpful and met with the residents of this area, and they were in agreement with my motion that it should be a matter for the council to establish a forum. And the reason for that is that this issue, which I'll outline in a minute, requires engagement with businesses, residents, the council and the IT. And it is felt that this council is the best placed to create that forum and to establish a dialogue to try and come to resolution to some of these issues. It's acknowledged that no one in particular is to blame for these problems, but it is something that has to be dealt with. The Garda indicated that their role really was limited to the enforcement of the liquor licensing laws and public order matters. And therefore, really, it's much, it's much a wider issue, and that's why I'm asking it for this forum, that we would establish a forum. To date, the residents have felt there has been an inadequate response by the Garda, but they have agreed to increase their presence and the residents are optimistic that that will address some of the issues. Just to let people know, I'm sure most of the councillors will have dealt with issues on the Mall over the last number of years. It's a huge range of issues that the residents put up with, actually on a weekly basis. They report that three times every week at least these activities take place. And then when you add to that, that on top of that, there's rag week, freshers' week, exam week, results week and graduation week. Not to mention the impromptu festivals that some of the businesses organise. It's really an intolerable situation for the residents to have to put up with this. And what they are putting up with is public urination, road safety issues, littering, broken glass, plastic all over their street. Vandalism to such an extent that two house owners have had cars written off due to unruly behaviour. Repeated threatening and abusive language by people when they're asked, maybe tone it down a little bit or take the party elsewhere. Intimidating behaviour. One resident, when she asked people to move off her windowsill because she was trying to watch television, somebody reached in the window and grabbed her and used unsavory language in relation to it. And that's just a flavour of what is going on there. So this does take, it will take more than just speaking to the Garda, and that's why I brought it to this forum as opposed to the JPC. The other thing to say is since I've done a little bit on radio in relation to this issue, I've been amazed by the amount of people who have contacted me from much further field, from the Abbey Quarter and from the Hazelwood Road area. Because these issues don't seem to be confined to the Mall. I think it's intensified in the Mall, but it is having a knock-on impact on people's lives in a much broader area. And so I would ask that the council engage with this. And one last thing that wasn't addressed in my motion, that was in the response, is that we put up some simple, small signage along that route to remind people that this is a residential area and to ask them to keep the noise down, particularly after nine or ten P M. Thank you, Caherlock.
Councillor Abay, you seconded the motion.
Yeah, thank you, Chair, I'd support the motion, but I think it goes a lot deeper than being here at the council. I think the IT themselves is allowed to answer for. I've worked in the nightclub industry up the Mall and down in the Garavogue. It's, it's more than nine o'clock, it happens over Fort Hill, it happens everywhere, just not up the Mall at all hours. I think one of the big issues is, apart from the drinking, is the drugs. I think the IT itself is littering with drugs. I think there has to be more of a consensus put between the Garda and the IT themselves rather than us. There's, there's a lack of Garda. Anytime we've worked in, whether it was up the Mall or in the Garavogue bar, you're trained to ring Garda, there's no Garda around. The amount of violence that's coming now with shootings is absolutely horrendous. You go back as far as the street parties or house parties out in Glen Carraig or in the shooting accommodation. It's not ten or twelve people going to a house party, it's a hundred and twenty-five or a hundred and fifty people going to a house party. So I think that the problem stems a lot more than just us, and I think the joint policing committee is the right place for this. But also that the IT be held accountable or responsible for the actions of the students as well. Thank you.
Think it's going to be dealt with from a working group as well, from the JPC. I think that's, that's what's been.
Yeah, as Chair of the JPC, I fully support the motion and certainly we'd be very happy to discuss it at the meeting because it's something that is ongoing for many, many years, and I look forward to it being fully discussed.
Okay, the motion.
Can I just come in in relation to this, and this is not just to the areas where this is happening. This is going on over the last number of years, and especially since a lot of student activity has concentrated on the Mall. There's a lot of barriers that's gone, we say around the town, there was a number, and they're really catered for the students. Sligo was a very vibrant place one time, it was full of students, but it all seems to be concentrated to that area. And even for eighteenth and twenty-first birthdays, with a lot of the activity that goes on up there, and especially when, we say during the summer months and whatever else, it's more activity, drinking and everything else on the street than there actually is inside. And I think the businesses out there is actually making their living from it, and I know they're providing employment and everything else. But they have a role too to play in this. At the end of the day, they can only get so many people in, and if they feel themselves that there's too many people there, they should be able to just curb it and say, here, no, enough is enough, that's it, we'll stick with what we have, you'll have to move on somewhere else. But it is needed. Like, this whole thing that we're at at the moment, we're trying to throw it around, like the Garda, the residents in the area, the business in the areas and whatever else. I can guarantee you that wouldn't be happening if the alcohol wasn't being sold there. So it's really the businesses themselves that really need to take this on. And as Gino says there in relation, the college needs to take it as well. I would look at these as being the two main players here that needs to get this sorted out. Now, this has been brought to my attention because even to a friend of mine, as she walks her children up to school. And as she says, they're going up to school there and they're trying to avoid broken glass and everything else on the street. And that'd be days that where the council wouldn't have been there quick enough to do it. But like, at the end of the day, it's, it does boil down to the businesses themselves as well. Like, their responsibility doesn't stop just with inside their four walls. They're serving drink outside, they need to be able to handle whatever's happening outside.
Okay, okay. Is that motion, yes, councillor Bree?
I, I support the motion, Caherlock. I live in the town centre, so I am aware of the level of antisocial behaviour over the years. COVID nineteen has certainly reduced it, but I would particularly listen to councillor Abay, who works in the town centre. who works in the town centre and has been working and witnessing what has been happening over the, over the last number of years. And I think we should take cognisance of what he said, because in real terms, what's needed is additional guard or resources. And I'm not being critical of the guards, they can only do so much with their resources. What they need is extra personnel.
Okay, and I think we can agree the motion. But Councillor Maguire, we'll let you finish your motion.
Thank you, Cahill. Yes, I, I agree. And obviously, that's why we had the first meeting in relation to this with the, with the Garda. And the Garda have agreed to increase their presence, of which I said was welcomed. And in relation to some of the other comments, this is, we've acknowledged it involves the residents, we've acknowledged it involves students, we've acknowledged that it involves residents. And that's why the council are the best placed to deal with this, because they have connections and relationships with all of those groups. And that's why I've asked for the forum. If it's to be established through the JPC, very good. I just wonder, could I get a response in relation to the signage, please, Cahill? Thank you.
And Tom? Could I ask you that? Or maybe we can come back to it? Maybe Tom just isn't there at the moment. Can we come back? Our, Jim?
Yeah, look, I talked to Director for Roads and we'll come back. We look at what signage can we put up to try and educate the people in the area that it is a residential area.
Very good. Much appreciated. Thank you, Cahill.
Gino, sorry.
Sorry, now, it's not to go against your motion or anything, she needed him in support of it. I've seen the trouble out there for years, but I don't think signage is anywhere to go with the problem.
It's a part of it, Gino. It's only one part of the problem. And the main issue is to have the forum and get people together.
The forum, yes. The forum is definitely key and by all means, I'd definitely be interested in it.
When the director, when you discuss it with the director and maybe see what he says as well, because we haven't actually said that there's, he hasn't, no one has agreed that there will be signage or won't be signage at the moment, so maybe.
I just think the signage, you'd like the rest of the signage out there kicked on.
When Jim talks and we can come back to it. So I think we're agreeing with the motion in, in principle, yes. Okay. Forty-seven, Councillor Maguire again.
Thank you, Cahill. Look, I omitted to put into this that this motion asks the council to write to the Department of the Environment and liaise with the Department of Finance. So if we could take that as being amended and just to say on this that.
Yeah, that's great.
The government have been very ambitious in relation to their introduction of EVs with 1 million hoped to be in place by 2030. And indeed, there has been some positive starts in this regard, with 20% of the new car purchases last year being electric vehicles. And they've put in various supports to assist that, they've reduced the tax rates, there's funding for charging points at home. However, as, as many people will be aware, there's a huge, it's a huge cost to buying a brand new EV and that's not in everybody's remit. And there's lots of people who are interested in doing it, but would need to buy a second hand EV. And there just are none available currently on the market. And there was significant inputs in the budget this year to increase the funding to support the switch to EVs and to improve the recharging infrastructure. And I hope that we will see the rollout of that. But unless people can access electric vehicles, it's not, we're not really going to see the benefit of this in the long term. So I'm just asking that the council would write to the Department of the Environment, that they would liaise with the Department of Finance to establish whether or not it is possible for us to reduce the VRT on imported electric vehicles only, so that we would increase the volume of them coming into the country and available for purchase. Thank you.
Is that agreed? Agreed. Okay, forty-eight, Councillor Healy is in. Start third, okay. Forty-nine, Councillor Bree.
Cahill, look, I, I wish to thank the Director of Services for her report regarding the implementation of the vacant homes action plan. I realise and acknowledge that in order to solve the housing crisis, there is a need for a major public house building programme funded by the state and controlled by the local authorities. However, in addition to a house building programme, I'm firmly of the belief that action must be also taken in regard to the large number of dwellings which are lying vacant in the midst of the housing crisis. I have highlighted this issue on numerous occasions, however, to date, no significant action has been taken by this council to use compulsory purchase powers to acquire long term vacant dwellings in Sligo. I have a significant concern, Cahill, regarding the information we are being provided with, particularly in relation to the number of vacant dwellings we are told are in the Sligo and environs area. In the 2016 census, the Central Statistics Office told us there were 1313 dwellings identified as unoccupied in the area. And this figure includes houses, apartments, flats, et cetera. However, in a report we received from council officials in April of this year, we were told that of the approximately 6,500 residential properties inspected up to the end of 2020, only 299 were determined to be vacant. And in a further report in June, council officials told us there were only 192 dwellings determined to be vacant. And the report we have received today says that at the end of last month, 222 dwellings were determined to be vacant. So I have to say, Cahill, look, I'm at a loss to understand how there can be such a huge discrepancy between the council's figures and the Central Statistics Office figures. The Central Statistics Office has told us that the enumerators who carried out the census were instructed to look for signs that the dwellings weren't occupied, i.e. no furniture, junk mail accumulation, overgrown gardens, et cetera, and to find out from neighbours whether it was vacant or not. And before indicating that a dwelling was vacant, the enumerators were instructed to call to the premises several times before recording it as vacant. Their listed properties were not included in the count of vacant dwellings. So I dare for, Cahill, I therefore cannot understand the huge discrepancy in the census figures and the council figures. And I'd like to know, Cahill, look, if the council has brought this discrepancy to the attention of the Central Statistics Office. The Central Statistics Office tells us that its enumerators physically called to every dwelling in Sligo during the census. And they called to 1,313 empty dwellings in Sligo on a number of occasions to confirm that they were vacant. So I would like to know if council staff called physically to every dwelling to ascertain if the dwellings were vacant. And I also fail to understand why our officials will not provide us with a list of the dwellings they have identified as vacant. Now, in, in the report, we're told it would be in breach of the Data Protection Act. However, I would point out, Cahill, look, that we're not looking for the names of the owners. Surely we as councillors can be provided with a map with each vacant dwelling marked on it, or we can even be provided with a list indicating the number of vacant dwellings in each street and estate. Because we would then be in a position to ascertain if the figures we are being provided with are accurate and possibly we could identify additional dwellings which are vacant. So in real terms, Cahill, look, have we been in touch with the Central Statistics Office to point out the discrepancy? And has council staff called physically to every dwelling to ascertain if the dwellings were vacant, such as the enumerators from the Central Statistics Office did? And can we have at least a list of the number of vacant dwellings in each street or terrace or whatever? Because the map we have received, with all due respect, is, is less than useless.
Councillor Abay, do you want to come in? You seconded it.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I'd be supporting Councillor Bree. And even if we go back to the Councillor Clark's motion earlier, we need houses. The discrepancies between our numbers and the CSO's numbers seem to be far off by nearly 1,000. These thousand houses, if we do compulsory purchase orders or even half of that, we'll be able to take some pressure off the housing list. I know we're building some socially affordable housing, but it's nowhere near enough. And if the threshold does get raised from the 27,500, I can see our numbers doubling on the housing list. So these will be needed to be compulsory purchase ordered. So I'd be supportive of motion.
Okay, and there was a number of questions asked there by Councillor Bree. Ms. Clark, you, you may need time to answer them or? You're on mute.
Yeah. And no, I certainly will be hopefully able to respond to some of them. I may not be able to answer them all. But in relation to the CPO powers, we have started the, the process of using the CPO. However, there is a long lead in time because a lot of information, it's a legal process, and it has taken us quite a while to get the information together in relation to it. But it is part of, I suppose, the powers that we do use and will be using, hopefully, down the line. In relation to vacant homes, there's certainly, this is only one measure, I suppose, in relation that government have in relation to trying to get more housing available from a vacant stock or an unoccupied stock that is there. And I haven't been in touch with the CSO. I, I could safely say that the staff have in relation to the numbers. However, part of the, the CSO figures was done in 2016 and I cannot say, cannot make any comment one way or another on what the renumer, or the enumerators, what information they put down. However, our figures from the, the survey, from the, the individual inspections on each house, on each street that has been undertaken, complies very much with the geodiretry, the November 21 geodiretry assessment that came out for the Sligo Borough area. So in relation to the difference between the April and June figures, I'll, I'll come back to you with clarification on that. My assessment of it is that perhaps that there, there will be changes from time to time. It's probably not a static figure and obviously there may be movement on some of these, but obviously it is still significantly, much significantly less than the census figures. And in, in a way, I have to kind of stand up for the staff because I know that they did a good thorough assessment of all of the housing stock on each of the streets, on each of the streets in Sligo. And it's, we're only talking here about Sligotown. In relation to the, the map, and certainly we had a good discussion on this last week because while we would have liked to be in a position to share this information, GDPR, and we've been told, doesn't allow us to. However, if this is a thing that we can provide a map with the details that is required without sharing any of the, the information that would identify personal information, property, the owners of the property or whatever else, we certainly will. And we are working on that. And I just want to reassure members that whatever we can do to provide as much information in relation to members on this topic, we certainly will. But we are not in a position to share the information that is available. But we will perhaps maybe look at another means of doing that. The other, now, if members are aware of, and you know, I have to agree that the map that was shared, but it is just an example, it has been clustered, it isn't interactive because we were unable to make it interactive. But as I said, we look at another mechanism perhaps to make the information, perhaps, or maybe to get the information to you without disclosing any personal data from a GDPR perspective. If members are aware of any vacant or unoccupied properties or premises on certain streets, we certainly would be interested to hear from, from members. And I've taken some notes, so if there's anything further, I'd certainly come back to Councillor Bree and to the members in relation to it.
Councillor Bree, could I, just, Councillor Baker, and just briefly before I finish with you, please.
I think the simplest way for concern that there is, is say if you, you don't have to say the name of who's in the property, but maybe in, we'd all have our own practice when you'd be canvassing, I know it's all the town area, but if you were able to keep sections of it just to show where there is a vacant property, and definitely you'd be able to find out by checking someone knows someone in an area if this store is vacant or not. And we have a problem too, and even within housing stock, where there is council houses that have been still paid on, and some of them are vacant. And I know some of it has been chased up. That's what is going on. Thank you.
Councillor Bree.
Just one very brief, the, the report we've received from Ms. Clark says that of the 7,896 residential properties inspected up to the end of November 2021, only 222 or 2.8 were determined to be vacant. Can I have absolute clarification? Did the staff call physically to inspect those 7,896 residential properties? Was there, was there a physical inspection by council staff?
Darcy, do you want to come back in on that?
Yeah. We would, and not, we wouldn't have been able to access individual properties because they were unoccupied. But certainly, everything was done to make sure that whatever premises or property or house that looked vacant, looked unoccupied. Yes, there was, every effort was made by staff to make sure that that was recorded on our list. And I will check up, I will check the situation in relation to the CSO and their findings and what might have been the discussion between, or the variance or whatever else. But the geodiretry figures that have recently come out are more, are more in line with our figures.
Chairman, again, I'll just ask, did council staff physically call to every dwelling of, of those 7,896? Did council staff physically call to them?
That's, my understanding is yes, that they did. But.
But?
Well, I'd, I'd verify that. That's one of the things I will come back.
That's the reason I'm asking, because your, your report says that there was 7896 residential properties inspected. You clearly state that.
Absolutely.
I'm asking for confirmation and you're going to see, you're telling me you have to check it. I, 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 this has been going on for, for months. I have been raising this at Strategic Policy Committee meetings, Chairman. Now, I expect, I'm not going to get a response now, but I would like a response in the next 48 hours. Okay, well, well, look, I, I think we can leave it at that and we can look for clarification maybe on, on what Councillor Bree is asking for us. That's all right with you, Ms. Clark, and we can come back to that then. All right. The motion is agreed. Fifty, Councillor Bree.
Cahill, look, over 20 years have passed since plans were first drafted for the development of the Wayne Street Car Park. However, after lengthy delays and then a recession, the preferred developers for the project went into liquidation. Six years ago in December 2015, when I sought an update on the issue, we were advised that the council had just concluded negotiations in respect of the last remaining interest to be acquired within the car park area and that the council was proceeding to have the lands vested in the council's name. We were also advised that because of the passage of time since the original plan for the car park area was conceived, it was considered prudent that the plan should be reviewed and that was right and proper. In 2018, the council's Public Realm Plan indicated that the car park area had the potential to become a new urban quarter of the town and a new master plan was recommended to take account of the economic changes which occurred since the original plan was drafted. So I, I welcome the report we have received today from the Director of Services and advising us that the, the new master plan is now nearing completion and is to be included as part of the proposed draft county development plan. I also note, Cahill, look, that it will be circulated to the members of the council in advance of it being placed on, on public display. I understand that there was a significant level of public consultation relating to the master plan despite the, the difficulties arising from the COVID pandemic. The car park area, if property redeveloped, has huge potential in terms of the growth of the town centre. And I, I just wish to thank the Director of Services for, for this particular case.
Thank you. You're happy with the report? Councillor Abay, you second, do you want to come in? Okay, that's agreed. Fifty-one, Councillor Bree.
Cahill, look, I, I wish to thank the Director of Services for this report on the seabed survey of Sligo Harbour. I'm particularly pleased and indeed relieved to note that the volumes of silt in the channel haven't increased and are essentially the same as they were when the last seabed survey was carried out 10 years ago. However, it must also be noted, Cahill, look, that the dumping at sea permit to facilitate the dredging of the channel and the area around the deep water jetty is only valid for another four years. And if the dredging isn't carried out in that period, this council will have to commence the difficult process of seeking a new permit. And I'm also pleased to note, Cahill, look, that all the navigational aids are fully operational, as I had reason to express concern about this issue at a borough district meeting last year. In the spatial and economic strategy for this region, it states that while the significance of Sligo Port and national terms may be low, it still remains important in the regional and local economy, supporting local industry and providing an important import export transportation facility. The strategy contains an objective to support, enhance and enable investment in the development and diversification of the harbour and other ports in the region. And it's also an, an objective in our own development plan to retain the port as a viable infrastructure and commercial entity supported by port related industries and business activities. So in terms of environmental benefits, Cahill, look, it makes much more sense to bring freight by ship to Sligo and the region rather than by road transport. And in this context, it's important that we carry out the dredging and secure the development of the harbour for shipping and as a driver of the economic development of the region. Now, I note the estimated costs associated with the dredging works as a sum of 5.5 million euro. Now, unfortunately, given the financial position of this council, we clearly couldn't come up with that type of funding. However, as new EU policies are currently being developed for low carbon transport infrastructure, I'd be hopeful that. I'd be hopeful that grant aid may become available for such works. And I assume that our executive will keep a watchful eye out for such potential funding in, over the period of next year. So thank you, Caherlock, and I wish to thank the director for the report.
Yeah, councillor Boyd.
Thank you, Chair, for supporting the motion, but also just, I don't know if it's chief executive, but to have a harbor board meeting. I think we've only had one in two years, if I'm not mistaken. Councillor O'Grady, you're on it. I'm the chair, yeah. Yeah.
Okay, well, maybe you can.
Yeah, so you called the meeting, and we'll be delighted to.
It'll be followed up. Fifty-two, councillor Gibbons.
Caherlock, I want to welcome the report from Mr. Confeder and I do realise that it's an area a special conservation and it's very difficult to get around. The only questions that I would like to ask in relation to it, there's been planned permission given for the new boathouse there for the Sligo Rowan Club and kayak club. And I just want to know in relation to it, are they looking at the parking space in there at the moment being adequate enough for the people that pursue both these sports? That's one aspect. Are they envisage that they're going to have to put an extension onto that car park at some stage? Because reality to it, that is going to increase visitors to that area. And even as it is, it's a very small car park with limited space. And I suppose the other thing that I would have to look at is that I've asked as well in relation to it. It is one area that is well-known, and a lot of anglers showing fishing competitions and things like that will launch their boat there. It's very difficult because of the way the parking is there at the moment and the amount of activity that's going on for them to launch the boat. And then, when they do launch the boat, they don't have any place to keep their car and trailer while they're using the boat on the lake. Now, realistically, anybody that's coming for fishing competitions or coming for anything, it increases tourism, and I feel myself that we shouldn't kind of turn our upper nose at it. If there is, if we are looking at that, we are going to increase on the car parking spaces, that there would be provisions made in relation to that. And I was wondering, Mr. Tom Confeder, could come back to me just in relation to that?
Okay, Tom, do you want to come in there?
Caherlock, I'll have to come back to councillor Gibbons on that. You know, whatever is in the planning application for the kayak, you know, it's what it is. So look, I'll come back and clarify that for councillor Gibbons. Thank you.
Okay, that motion is agreed.
No, can I ask, can I defer that motion so that it can be discussed at the next meeting that we? Or can I get a report back for the next meeting?
I get a report back to you, councillor.
Well, that's all right. We'll move the motion here.
Yeah, perfect. And fifty-three, again councillor Gibbons.
I defer that motion. I think we're kind of, a bit on.
Okay, thank you. Fifty-four, councillor Boyd.
Thank you, Chair. After being contacted by the Treasury Luton Committee, they were asking if this council would stand with their communities in Luton and our colleagues in Luton County Council who voiced their clear opposition to this carbon-heavy, energy-intensive mining industry. While people only learned of proposals a few weeks ago, the support has been excellent. Over four thousand people objected to the licence so far. And this is at a time when people are being constantly hammered about carbon emissions. Yet rural dwellers are being told not to burn tar for wood, but they're considering something like this which will be of no benefit to the community and will damage the environment. So I formally propose the motion.
You're my councillor Bree, sorry.
I second the motion, Caherlock. Gold mining is one of the most destructive industries in the world. It can displace communities, contaminate drinking water and destroy pristine environments. It pollutes water and land with mercury and cyanide, endangering the health of people and ecosystems. Producing gold for one wedding ring alone generates twenty tonnes of waste. And I think it would be an outrage if a green minister agreed to grant a licence for gold mining in Luton. And I therefore believe that we should sow solidarity with the elected representatives of the people of Luton and endorse their decision to oppose gold mining in their county. Thank you.
Is that motion agreed? Agreed. Fifty-four, councillor Gilroy. Sorry, fifty.
Okay, thank you very much, and thanks to Marie for the response. Look, we have forty point eight percent of our population in the Valley Moat Tobaccon area, thirty-two point two in the Sligo Strand Hill and twenty-seven percent in our area. The money is not being divided up evenly. The expenditure is not being divided up evenly. When I look back at the budgets and expenditure over the last number of years, indeed the plans for the next number of years and the appendices of our recent budget, there is an unfair and unjust imbalance in the levels of expenditure across the three areas. Why do we see grass being cut in the council-owned estates and town, but not in the rural areas? Why are there gravediggers in Sligo graveyard, but not in any other graveyard? Are no one to do the maintenance unless they're on a sea scheme or something like that applied by the community? Why are there fire stations in the Valley Moat Tobaccon area and the Sligo Strand Hill area, but none in the Sligo Drumcliff area? Why is there a swimming pool in Sligo, a swimming pool in Ennis Groan? And even, there's going to be one in Tobaccon if we're not careful very soon. Councillor Taylor will deliver. Why are there libraries in Ennis Groan, Tobaccon, Valley Moat and Sligo Town, but none in the Sligo Drumcliff area? This isn't today or yesterday. And it's not the current council or the current chief executive that's responsible for this, but it just seems to be they're all right, they're okay. The figures don't lie. This has got to change, and we need to be proactive in changing it. We talked earlier on about constructive discrimination towards the region in transition, northwest. Well, we need that towards, especially towards the Sligo Drumcliff area. In my opinion, it's like an apartheid against the seventeen thousand six hundred and seventy-five people who live in our area. And I think it has to be level. I'm not looking for it to be used against any other area. I just want equality. Thank you.
Support the motion. Now, councillor, do you want to come in?
Thank you, my promoters. Yeah, listen, he's dead right in what he's saying. Does mean, and I suppose as the municipal areas are broken up now into three sections, what it was to, we didn't notice the difference. So we, we need to look at this series, and as I says, we represent seventeen thousand people as well. So they need to see their same value. And they pay their property tax and they pay their household charges and everything else. So I think that we should have a fair and balanced on it. Thank you.
The figures, I know, don't lie, but forty-eight percent of the people is in our area.
Forty point eight.
We'd be happy to take forty point eight percent of the budget, absolutely.
Absolutely.
If we can break it down that way, there's no problem. Miss Confeder, you listen to us there. Is the motion, can we agree the motion? Oh, sorry, Marie, it could be Marie, but we're happy to take forty-one-ish percent of the budgets, absolutely. And we'll support our other two municipal areas and their percentages.
Just in my reply, I said, you know, it's based on activity, need and all the rest schedule and municipal district works, it's given consideration in the programme of work. It's not as straightforward as just dividing it out per head of population. It's location, locality and services. But it is given consideration in the budget process, but it mightn't be as clear-cut as councillor Gilroy is looking for.
Okay, councillor Baker, you want to come in there?
Just from past history, and you have sung a few things, and olden times was where you got a TD in your area, and it might be.
There you go.
I know those health centres and fire stations, they knew when there was. They're gone, those TDs now, so that's one way forward.
They were the good old days.
We'll, thanks for the response, and Marie, you know that as far as I'm concerned, my hurrah is every bit as important as my hurrah by, so.
Can we agree the motion? Agreed? Okay. Fifty-six, councillor Gilroy.
Thanks, Caherlock. Yeah, we recently passed a motion here to allow a procedure where prospective planning applications on strategic land reserves can be dealt with by means of, I think it's material alteration it's called. As some of these are now progressing, I consider that it might be a good time for us to get some guidance from the Office of the Planning Regulator because I don't want us to dig any holes for ourselves. I think we all acknowledged that even in the short time, and I accept Dorothy's report and reply there about how we're now in the process of the new development plan, and hopefully that will deal with some of the issues. But in that year and a half or two years that we have to go before that comes in, we need to be getting things moving. And I know that the office, the planning office, is working with people, and I sincerely thank them for that. But I'm worried that we need to be cautious. And I think if we had somebody from the Office of the Planning Regulator to say to us, "Look, guys, we'll accept this as far as X, but don't go beyond that or we're not going, we're going to have to start questioning why you didn't do it as a variation or something else." So I just think maybe we could sit around in a roundtable format with them, or even on a Zoom meeting with them, and get a little bit of guidance so that we don't, we don't cause any problems. I'm not looking to bring any trouble on us or anything like that. I just want to get a little bit of progress and get us closer to the targets, the housing targets that are set out in the national planning framework for Sligo. Thank you.
Have we, seconder?
I second that, yeah.
Yeah, councillor Clark, do you want to come in?
Yeah, just to say that councillor Gilroy is in a very good position as secretary of the Rural Planning Group to convene such a meeting. And you were the chair of it, and I think that the CE is anxious to engage with us, and there hasn't been much progress on it, and we still have a bad housing situation. So maybe you might push that boat out a bit.
We have, we have, we have talked about it, we just haven't set a date for the meeting yet. But we certainly will. Is that motion agreed? Fifty-seven, councillor Gibbons.
Caherlock, it's, I want to welcome the report from Mr. Tom Confeder. I'm glad to see that it's a strong possibility that that works is going to be carried out within two thousand and twenty-two. No, the one thing that I would like to say, and I don't know if you're aware of it or not, just outside of the Clarion Village, that's where the road narrows into its narrowest. And a bit of property, I think myself that the council needs to be looking at, maybe CPO or comes under arrangement with the HSE, is just the other side of the road there is the widening, because as I says, it feeds into a botanic from both sides, and it creates major problems for buses, cars, anything else that's going along that area. And we were talking the area around about lighting and things done that area. And I think we felt that all of that could be incorporated in with any future upgrade of that road. So I thank you very much for this report.
Sorry, can I just come in for a second on that? Just that the chronic diseases hub that's going there by the HSE is going to probably attract some extra traffic into that area, and I think that might be kept in mind when considering councillor Gibbons' motion that there is going to be extra traffic. Thank you.
Is that agreed? Oh, councillor Clark, yes.
Before you move on to votes of sympathy on a point of information, can I ask the CE, is he happy with the progress that has been made in his initiative to ask councillors to refer their motions to their own electoral area? For example, I note that there's twelve motions until this hour that could be dealt with at the Sligo Strand Hill area, where the rural councils have been imposing. Have you had some difficulty in that in getting the Sligo Town-based councillors to us here to your initiative?
Caherlock, no, fairness, right? We're councillors, we represent the people. It's as simple as that. And we want to bring up what we want to bring up at these meetings slash towns to ourselves. We think that something is important enough to bring it up, we'll bring it up. I feel these issues that is there, remember, affects even people from out of town coming across those roads. It's as simple as that. Chairman, I didn't ask councillor Gibbons to come in.
Okay, see, see, okay.
Thank you for that pass, councillor Clark. Look, we met with the Policies and Procedures Committee, and it was agreed at that meeting, it was a gentleman's agreement, right, that we try and progress to moving to having local issues dealt with the municipal district and national and international issues dealt with in this meeting. I think we've made some progress. I'd like to make more progress. I think in the middle of what we're facing at the moment, should we be in here after three hours and five minutes? No, I do not.
Agreed.
Right? I think it's not. I don't, I don't, I know what the hell, we're allowed to do it. I know we're allowed to go beyond two hours. But when we came to meet with the Policies and Procedures Committee, and it is their decision, it was all to do with making sure the meetings moved quicker and sharper, and at the same time, from the health side of things. So all I would ask, and I would encourage people, if we could keep to the gentleman's agreement, I think it'd be better for everybody concerned. And ultimately, it will give more impact to the municipal district meetings, which is what we're all looking for.
Thanks, Caherlock. I want to welcome the CE's comments on that. And I suppose it's difficult for us rural councillors, that might have a pressing issue that we can't hold out until our until our local area meeting, but we're doing our best, and I'd encourage town councillors to do the same.
Okay, points taken. We'll leave it at that. Fifty-seven, votes of sympathy, and just on that, I'd like to convey this council's sympathy to Emir Connelly and her family and the passion of her father, Jimmy Kilgannon. And we send our wishes at this difficult time, and may Jimmy rest in peace. And I know that everyone will agree with that, and everyone would like to speak on that, but I think that's. Yes.
And just to say, on behalf of the staff of the county council, we'd also like to be assured of those comments, Caherlock. Thank you.
And I'd like just personally as well to send sympathies to the family of Porrick Malarkey. Porrick was a former outdoor staff member in South Sligo, and he passed away last week as well, so may he rest in peace. Votes of congratulations.
Can I just come in there, Caherlock?
Yes. Councillor Connelly, come ahead.
Congratulate the Phoenix players in Tobaccon on winning confined section of the one act drama in Innis over the weekend. And to their producer, Tom Welch, and cast, and well done to them all. Thank you.
Okay, and I've, I've two votes of congratulations here that I'd read out, and one is proposed by councillor Gilroy and seconded by councillor O'Grady, Bridy Gallagher and Jim Gray. This comes as a shout to you, Kevin. Crevenmore, Cliffley and River Road Carlton, and success of being involved in the Ireland's Own autopsy of short stories. Well done. And all involved in the application for the WHS tentative list, care of Dorothy and the Planning and Community and Development, the successful application to have the Sligo Neolithic landscape added to the tentative list for World Heritage site status. And please and co-congratulation to Sligo Neolithic Landscape Group on their excellent work. I think that's important too, and that's proposed by councillor Gilroy and seconded by councillor O'Grady. Councillor Helim, sorry, come in.
I want to congratulate Robert Lindsay, who was retired from the council after a long number of years of service. He did great service out of our way, he's in the Coloni area, and I want to thank him for the great work he did and how we worked so well with the different community groups in the area. He's the last treasurer for, the simple reason is the experience the man had, and he brought to the table. And I know he's left it in good hands now with the new lad that he's taken over from him. But I think that we, does mean the importance of our outdoor staff is second to none. And I want to wish Robert and his family all the best. Thank you.
And councillor Baker has one in here, and I seconded for Frankie Quinn, the manager of the Shamrock Gales under seventeen team, on winning the seventeen A competition for the first time in forty-eight years. So well done to them. Conferences and training. Noted, summary of proceedings, conferences attended in accordance with section, noted. Correspondence. Okay, just in correspondence, just something I want to bring up from the minister's office. And I'll just read it out, dear Caherlock, I refer to engagement between my department of Sligo County Council over recent years, and in particular to the financial plan that was put in place in two thousand and fifteen. I'm pleased to confirm that having regard to the financial results of two thousand and twenty and over the lifetime of the plan, I now intend to close this financial plan. And to that end, I approve payment of the final contribution. This payment of four hundred thousand will bring the financial contribution of my department under the plan to five million since two thousand and fifteen. I would like to pay tribute to the efforts of the staff, the elected members and the management team, past and present.
management team, past and present, to significantly improving the financial position of Sligo County Council and securing closure of the plan. I believe that your local authority is now well placed to continue delivering for the people of Sligo and the wider northwest region and that the in for upgrade regeneration of Sligo, of Sligo Town, public realm improvements and the development of the city campus will all enhance the overall offering of Sligo in terms of social, economic and community development.
Minister Burke. Good man, surely, I have to say. Well, you can put in motions for more money, we'll raise, we'll raise it. And but that's good news. And yes, and just just on AOB as well, there's been information circulated on the new arrangement for councillors allowances and expenses. And I would ask you to contact Pauline if there are any queries. And the most urgent issue is one of the members' insurance. Everybody isn't in yet. There's only two or three left, I believe, just about their insurance. And and that today's the deadline on that, am I correct? Today's the deadline on that and you just might confirm with Pauline if you can. Uh, matters arising from the minutes, sorry. Yeah, AOB, yeah.
Sorry, microphone, uh, yeah, just, I wonder could we call the SPCs earlier in January? Uh, the simple reason is that there's an all Ireland strategy on the rail review happening. And the closing date for that is the twenty second of January. So I'm asking that that meeting be called early in January for the simple reason is our next municipal, our our next main meeting is on the seventeenth of January. So it's important that S that SPC meets before that because any recommendation that they have, they'll have to come in front of a council.
Counselor Gilroy, that's your, your, are you? Are you, can we, can we agree that? We can agree that. I could, I I I'm in agreement with that. And so we leave that up to yourself. And I think, is that it? I just like to, there's, there's grub outs at if he hasn't had it all eaten already. And could I, could I, but I wish you all a a very happy Christmas and and I hope that it's.
Understood.
And to all the staff and to everyone that has helped out over the years. It's been a difficult year. We've got through it. You certainly saved the best debate for last anyway, but I knew it was coming. But happy Christmas to you all. I absolutely will if you go. Don't mind at all. We could go to Ballygallie, we'll get it for nothing.